ourselves, the drought is hitting so many communities. So we need to make sure we think intelligently about climate change and what will be the overall supply and then allocate fairly. I can't help myself, I do want to push for it. The Bureau of Reclamation needs good funding. We need to have scientists, we need to have attorneys who understand the complex law of the river. We need to have the best data and thinkers at the table so that we can get a deal done that makes sense for all of the stakeholders and ensures the continued success of the many states and Mexico who depend so much on Colorado.
Hello, I'm Phoenix City Councilwoman Keisha Hads Washington, and I want to let you know about the city's Parks and Recreation Master Plan. The Master Plan defines the community's vision and guides the department's direction to create safe and enjoyable parks for our childrens and family. The plan will look at all of our parks from East Lake to Nuestro. We will also take a look at our recreational amenities such as the Mural Smith Recreation Center and the South Phoenix Youth Center. Our goal is to address equity of access for our residents. Part of the Master Plan process is receiving feedback from you, our residents. I invite you to take part in the community workshops and surveys that will be made available throughout the next 18 months. Creating spaces for all Phoenicians to enjoy is our goal. You can learn more about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan by visiting the link below.
I am Chad McCusky, I'm the Aviation Director. I'm so happy to be here with you all today and emcee this amazing event. We're thrilled to have all of you with us as we begin our countdown to NASCAR Championship Weekend. I'd like to take a moment especially to thank our distinguished guests and fans for joining us here today as we gear up for one of the most highly anticipated events in the Valley of the Sun. So soon, tens of thousands of fans will be descending upon the desert to witness four exciting races over the course of three days right here in the West Valley. On Friday, October 31st, we're going to be hosting the NASCAR Craftsman Truck Series Championship Race. On the very next day, Saturday, November 1st, we have an exciting doubleheader with the NASCAR Xfinity Series Championship Race and the ARCA Menards Series West Desert Diamond Casino West Valley 100 Race. And then on Sunday, the big event, November 2nd, get ready for the NASCAR Cup Series Championship Race where the best drivers in the world will compete for the highly coveted Bill France Cup. Now, alright. So I know everybody's here for the big countdown clock unveil, but we've got some amazing speakers here that want to tell you a little bit more about the weekend's events. So before we unveil that clock, I'd like to introduce our speakers beginning with our host, Phoenix Raceway President Latasha Kazi.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much, Chad, I appreciate it. I appreciate you all having us again for the countdown clock for Championship Weekend. I do have to say a true thank you to Mayor Kate Gallego. I know everyone's schedules are really full, but there is no schedule like Mayor Kate's, and I appreciate you rushing to get here, as well as all of our other speakers who are here with us today. The interim director for the Arizona Office of Tourism, Alex, thank you for being here. Ron, I always appreciate you and appreciate you being here. And as well, our agency, a commit agency for helping us put this together and really for all of your partnership for championship and all we do. So to all of you who are here, truly, your presence just speaks volumes about NASCAR Championship Weekend, which as mentioned will be at Phoenix Raceway the weekend of October 31st through November 2nd. What we do know is that Phoenix Sky Harbor is the friendliest airport. We are known for that here, and we know that we have thousands of fans who will come through Phoenix Sky Harbor with one destination in mind or a common destination in mind, which is Phoenix Raceway. So thank you to the team here at Sky Harbor for your dedication and everything that you do for our fans who come here through Phoenix, through Phoenix Sky Harbor. This year, we'll have NASCAR fans from all 50 states, 21 nations, and five continents traveling through Sky Harbor for NASCAR Championship Weekend. And while this will be our last championship weekend for just a while at Phoenix Raceway, we know that Phoenix Raceway will continue to be a must-visit destination. We're not going anywhere though. Championship Weekend, it will come back in a few years, but we will still be here in 2026, committed to having two NASCAR race weekends, both in March and a playoff race in October as well. So we're not going anywhere, we will still be here. And regardless of when we have our races, what we do know for sure is that all of our fans that are coming in, they are so passionate about racing, but they are also passionate about our state in Arizona. We know that they enjoy our restaurants, they stay at our hotels, and they explore all the nature that Arizona has to offer, so all the wonders of Arizona. So they do that, but then at the same time, our incredible championship weekend, it also hosts from broadcasting throughout the nation, it will offer 17.1 billion, that's 17.1 billion media impressions annually. So that's, yes. So Arizona will definitely be highlighted. So again, I can't wait to welcome you all back to Phoenix Raceway. Ever since Joey Logano won last year for championship weekend, our Phoenix Raceway team has been hard at work for this upcoming weekend, so I have to shout out the Phoenix Raceway team members that are here. Thank you to every single one of you for all that you do. And lastly, if you have not got your tickets yet, you guys know I have to give a plug. If you have not gotten your tickets yet for championship weekend, please do so now because they are going fast. PhoenixRaceway.com, we are definitely headed towards another sellout weekend, so we hope to see you there. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Latasha. What an amazing event this is going to be. Really, when it comes to really making one of these types of events happen, it requires a regional approach and a regional effort. And we're really excited to have somebody in the West Valley with us today, an amazing elected leader in the West Valley, to tell you a little bit more about the work that they're doing as well. Please join me in welcoming Avondale City Councilmember Max White to the podium.
Good morning, thank you so much. First to Latasha, I really appreciate you, Chad, much appreciation. Also to Mayor Gallego, Alex, thank you so much, I appreciate you, Ron as well. And my fellow councilmembers, Councilmember Solorio and Councilmember Weiss. My name is Max White. I am here representing the city of Avondale, bringing you greetings on behalf of Mayor Mike Pineda, who couldn't be with us this morning. It's a pleasure to be here today as we count down one of the most thrilling times of the year in Avondale. For six years in a row, we've had the honor of being the home of the NASCAR Championship Race, and we're really grateful for that. Since 2000, we've been the heart of action for NASCAR. Every year, NASCAR brings over 100,000 fans to Avondale. With the influx, it's so significant, it's like adding another city's worth of people to Avondale overnight. Yes, it's something to cheer about. When you see the campgrounds out there, heck, we even have a vendor, Walmart comes and sets up a store, it's really big out there. So this surge fuels our local economy and we're grateful for it. From hotels to restaurants to retail, small businesses and large, we get to showcase what our city has to offer on the national stage. NASCAR doesn't just bring fans, it brings passion, energy, and a national spotlight to us. Avondale has become a can't-miss destination for sports fans, not just across the valley, but from across the country, and now we're hearing from throughout the world. Phoenix Raceway is truly a jewel of the desert, and we're proud to call it our own in Avondale. While we know the championship race is going to rotate next year, we remain proud of our legacy and the incredible memories that NASCAR has made in the city of Avondale. Our commitment to racing, community, exceptional fan experiences remains stronger than ever. We're excited to host the championship race this year, as well as the spring race next year, and to continue to be a part of NASCAR's story for the years to come. And I believe we'll get a playoff race hopefully next year in Avondale, so don't fret, the big races are still coming back. And as we get ready to count down this championship weekend, let's continue to keep Avondale as a part of this story. Thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you out in Avondale at the end of the month, starting on October 31st, November 1st for the final championship race weekend for a while on November 2nd. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, we're so happy to have you with us. Now, we have thousands of people coming to the valley for this NASCAR event, but Arizona is such an amazing place, we want to make sure that they come and they actually look at all that Arizona has to offer. I'm pleased to announce my next guest. Please join me in welcoming interim director of the Arizona Office of Tourism, Alex Skelpser-Ridgeway. Alex?
Thank you, Chad. Good morning, everyone. My name is Alex Skelpser-Ridgeway, and I'm the interim director for the Arizona Office of Tourism. And what a great day it is to be here at Sky Harbor. As we wait for the countdown clock to be unveiled, I know we're all feeling the excitement of gearing up to host another major sporting event. And for us at the Arizona Office of Tourism, this ticking clock doesn't only mean the start of the events, it represents the moment we get to host more than 40,000 race fans each day of the three-day weekend. Taking you on the road with me. This significant influx of visitors is much more than just a large crowd, though it's just an economic engine in motion. NASCAR Championship Weekend at Phoenix Raceway in Avondale is an undeniable economic powerhouse. A full 70% of ticket purchasers are non-local fans, travelers visiting Arizona from all 50 states and around the globe. And when they're here, they boost our hotels, our restaurants, small businesses, and so much more, all to the tune of over $450 per day, per visitor. Of course, we want these fans to come for the race, but we want them to stay for Arizona. We want them to feel the awe of the Grand Canyon, experience the vibrant deserts and culture of Southern Arizona, and of course, venture out and discover the world-class experiences of the valley. This countdown clock isn't just counting down to the race, it's counting down to a warm welcome and an unforgettable Arizona experience. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Alex, such a pleasure to have you with us. And now, as we think about kind of bringing it a little bit more local, I'm really proud to introduce and welcome to the stage Ron Price, who is the president and CEO of Visit Phoenix, and he's also the current chair of our very own Phoenix Aviation Advisory Board. So welcome, Ron.
Alright, well, good morning, everyone. It is a great day in Phoenix. I tell you, this morning, you get up, I had to contemplate putting a pullover because we got our fall weather kicking in, right? This morning before this, we kicked off one of the largest conventions that we've ever hosted, the semi-convention downtown. Thank you, Mayor, for being a part of that. And then we get to be here announcing the kickoff clock to the NASCAR championship. And let me tell you something, last year I had the privilege to go to my very first NASCAR championship. If you've never been to one of these championships before, you gotta go. Latasha and her team do a fantastic job. I gotta tell you, I went out there, we talked about 100,000 people showing up, and it's one, it's like you see it in pictures, but when you're there, you realize it really is a city being built in the desert for this event. Latasha, I had a great experience joining her. She asked me when the race started, "Step outside real quick." We were inside of a nice little suite there. And having never grown up in the sport, had been around it, to feel the engine start, not here, but to feel the engine start. And this is why I saw a smile from last year going to this race. Getting in, getting around, meeting all the folks that are involved with the race, being a part of the drivers' meeting prior to the race, I'm looking around and I'm looking at people I recognize. These are CEOs of major companies coming in for this race. So as we talked about, this is much more than an event, it's an economic driver for our entire state. So we're very excited to be a part of this again. We're looking forward to getting the show on the road, so thank you all for being here. We look forward to seeing you out the race.
Thank you, Ron. And for our final speaker, it's our incredible honor to welcome to the stage our leader, Phoenix Mayor Kate Gallego. Mayor?
Championship Valley rises again. We are so excited to welcome NASCAR Championship Series Weekend to the valley. The jewel of the desert is a very special place, and it delivers so much economic impact for us in this region. That 70% plus coming from out of town translates to a $473 million economic impact for the valley. Of course, the biggest winners are the people who get to attend, but the entire valley wins with an economic impact like NASCAR delivers. Our residents tell us they want more services, but they are feeling tight on their pennies and don't want any additional taxes. Tourism makes such a difference in bringing wealth to our valley, we will all benefit from the economic impact that NASCAR will bring. It's a very special weekend, a huge congratulations to the team in Avondale who welcomes people from all 50 states and all over the world. The valley does tourism well, and we are sure to put on a great show for championship weekend. A huge congratulations to the entire team at Phoenix International Raceway. Time and time again, people tell us they have a wonderful experience. We got sunny skies, great racing fans. Now we have a more automotive-focused economy, and so that makes this even more special. We are 26 days away, and I can already feel the excitement. It feels like once again, the valley is the center of so many great things. We welcome the WNBA Finals this week, incredible semiconductor show, and so much more, all leading into the really magic time in November when we have NASCAR. So with that, if I could welcome everyone up to the scage, it is time to unveil the countdown clock.
Ready?
Yep. Counting down from five?
You want me in front?
Yeah. You might as well. Alright, we got everyone? Okay, ready?
Alright, should we count down from five? Five, four, three, two, one.
Five, four, three, two, one. It's official, Phoenix is on the clock, 226 days until tip-off.
Today was the official kickoff of the countdown clock at Sky Harbor Airport, marking 226 days until tip-up for the 2026 Women's Final Four.
This is the first time we've ever hosted the Women's Final Four. We're really looking forward to April, where we will welcome fans from all over the world to see the best in women's college basketball.
And it's going to be an amazing party and campus in downtown Phoenix. What's really interesting about this event is all of the extra events are free, so it's family-friendly, it'll be throughout the weekend, it's a holiday weekend with Easter, and so we'll be able to see families from around the state and around the city come down and enjoy the Women's Final Four.
We have four Division One programs here in Arizona, so this community is more than ready to embrace the Women's Final Four. When it takes center stage, it's going to be the best setting for the Women's Final Four. For young fans, for players, for coaches, for families, they get to create lifelong memories on one of the biggest stages in sports.
Really, there's nothing like the excitement of March Madness. Women's basketball is on the rise. As someone who played basketball, I too was one of those that envisioned it being at the pedestal that it is today. Yes, they drive tourism, yes, they drive economic development, but they really give us, our state, our city, an opportunity on the national and global scale to have exposure.
The NCAA has been wonderful about partnering with our Parks Department.
They did renovations and projects such as East Lake Park, got to see new basketball courts and redesign of their facility. And I am just excited to see how it all comes to fruition in 2020, 16.
Phoenix is a basketball town. We are also Championship Valley. We have welcomed the NCAA, Super Bowls, great soccer. This is the place to host championship events.
There is no greater pace in Phoenix in April because the weather is amazing, and we are coming off of spring training, so just get ready to have amazing weather, good sports, and good food out in Phoenix.
So for the next 226 days, this clock will not only serve as a reminder of the Women's Final Four for the millions of travelers that come through beautiful Sky Harbor Airport, it's also a point of pride for all of us here in the community.
You'll see that we are excited about the NCAA Final Four. The women are going to be really proud of the event we put on.
Alright, again, welcome, guys. I'm Bob Adams, Northwest Deputy Director, and again, I want to thank you guys for coming out to the lot there, we grand opening. First of all, I do want to thank our Parks and Maintenance Team, and in particular, Stacia Holmes, if you'll raise your hand, Stacia. She has done a great job with this event, getting her ready, the park. She's also project manager on this whole thing as well, so she's done a great job making sure everything's done well. So thank you. And then before we get going too, is once we get done here, we have public art over here by the, on the north side of the area here, where you can do some art stamp work, and then you have phone eyes, and you have many different booths here. Go out and enjoy all this time and have fun. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce Councilwoman Betty Renato with deep fire.
Good morning, everyone. How's District 5 doing? How's everyone doing? I can't hear you guys, how's everyone doing? Well, thank you, thank you so much, everyone. I just want to thank everyone for all of their hard work on making this happen. I love seeing the new pickleball courts that we have here on the west side. I think, you know, this is one of the second parks, I think, in District 5 that has pickleball. So we're very excited of all the different resources that we've been able to bring into the district. And there's a lot of people to thank, but more importantly, I want to thank our West Plaza Neighborhood Association, I know you guys are out here. Just want to thank you guys for always advocating for your neighborhoods, for advocating for your neighbors, to making sure that we have these amazing green spaces for our children, for them to be able to come out and enjoy it. I know that it's not always been easy to keep this park clean and to keep it active for our community, but West Plaza, we wouldn't be able to do it without you guys. Cactus Park Precinct, thank you guys so much to our SROs, to our police officers, to everyone that continues to make sure that this park is safe. Thank you guys so much. Chase Building Team, thank you guys for all the renovations and all the hard work that you guys put into the park. And of course, to our Parks and Recs Department, to our director Cynthia, and all of our staff, thank you guys for all the great work that you guys do day in and day out. And this is a gem, this is a gem in the heart of District 5. We love seeing everyone that has come out here today, that has been part of everything that we, that we have been... that we, that we have been doing, to all of the partners, to everyone that has been here, to everyone that has made this.
It is October 7, 2025, and I'll now call our policy meeting to order. Will the clerk call the roll?
Councilwoman Guardado. Councilwoman Hernandez.
Here.
Councilwoman Hodge-Washington.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Here.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Here.
Councilwoman Stark.
Here.
Councilwoman Waring.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
Thank you so much for joining us. We're gonna have a really important council meeting today on the budget, and our strategic work group on accessibility will present, but we'll begin today with council information and follow-up requests. Would anyone like to go first? Councilwoman Pastor.
Hi. I'm just waiting for the slides. Thank you. As you can see, I am looking for volunteers, volunteer with District Four. We are having monthly cleanups, and it's starting from Maryvale to Midtown, and we are focusing on organizing community cleanups in different, different parts of the district, and we need help. The more hands on deck, the better, the faster we can clean that alley or clean that neighborhood. If you like, you can scan the QR code to get started, so thank you. As I spoke about cleanups, we have, next slide, we have the Alhambra Community Cleanup this Saturday from 8 to 11. We will be meeting at Granada East Elementary School, 3022 West Campbell Avenue. And once again, you can scan that card, or scan it. Investing in District Four. As you can see, next slide, as you can see, investing in District Four, we invested $20,000 for trees and shade, $15,000 for water for the heat outreach, $15,000 for public activation initiatives, Zumba yoga self-defense classes, $5,000 for a mural at Suenyo Park, $10,000 to provide resources for students through the Phoenix Economic Partners, $500, $5,500 to sponsor VFW 720's Food Pantry, $2,500 for academic scholarships and programming with Aguilas Summer Symposium, and $8,000 to support St. Vincent de Paul's Dental Program for the vulnerable population. I just thought it was important to see where taxpayers' dollars are going and what type of programs they're going to. Participatory Budget in Action, as you can see on the slide, with our participatory budget funds, we paid for a new speed hump at 49th Drive and Crinton Lane, food and snacks for the local El Etero for the Migos Block Watch Water Safety Event, movies in the park at Celito Park, Solano Park, and Maryview. And we were also excited to see what community projects are coming our way for the next round of participatory budget. I wanted to give a shout-out to Rehova St. Center, who celebrated their 30th anniversary. That's the game one, but I think one more back. They celebrated 30, their 30th anniversary. They are located on 27th Avenue in Camelback, and we had a great time just listening to all the praise. And most importantly, that day, as I was sitting and listening to the music and all the kind words, I just said, I felt the spirit that day. So it was a great time to be with them. Game Kickoff, next slide, Game Kickoff. As you can see, we were at the Game Kickoff. We celebrated this past weekend, along with my other colleagues and the mayor. And you can see leaders across the city showed up to connect and share information on how they activated their community and what resources are out there. It's a great way to see our community active. And most importantly, I'd like to thank those that supported the game event and was hosted by Phoenix Neighborhoods. This one comes to heart, next slide. I want to thank Michael Peterson and Coria for his service. He served with me for eight and a half years. He has now officially retired. He is now gone to his next chapter, next journey. And most importantly, him and I, as I called, as we called each other, he was my work husband. And when those that know, spending eight and a half years, very close, he becomes part of family, and he became part of my family. So I want to wish him the next chapter, wish him the best in the next chapter of life as he continues to serve by volunteering and providing, sitting with cancer patients and providing guidance as they go through the process. So a great shout-out to him. And the most exciting piece about it is that he moved in District Four, so he's closer to me now. I can take the light rail and jump off and see him. Next slide, I also want to thank Stacia Napa for her service. She served a year in my office, and I want to wish her the best. As a Phoenix Union School Board Member and President, she has a lot of activities on her hands, and I wish her the best. Now introducing District 14. As you can see, Ana Maria Maldonado is the interim Council Assistant. We have Brenda Munoz-Mungia as Communication and Constituent Service. We have Diego Rodriguez-Bascas as our intern, and Johanna Moreno-Supuva as our intern. They are the ones at this moment that are in the, I would say, in the trenches, but making sure that everything is running smoothly and making sure all the constituent work is getting done and outreach. Ana Maria is managing the office and overseeing the operations. Brenda handles the Social Media and Constituent Service. Diego is our ASU intern, and Johanna is our intern from Carl Hayden High School. So you see, I have the whole range of generations, and then you have me. So if you have any questions, that's the team that you need to reach out to. Next slide. As always, you can contact my office, 602-262-7447, or send an email so that we can help and assist any way we can. Really appreciate it. And before I end, I would like to give a shout-out to Inger Erickson. She will be retiring, and we will be celebrating her tomorrow, but I want to give a shout-out to Inger Erickson for all her service. How long has it been?
39.
39 years. I wanted her to go to 40, but she said no. She, 39 years, so if you can give a round of applause to Inger. So I have two more to go. I want to recognize Chris Mackey. She will also be leaving this Friday. It will be her last day. Chris, can you please stand? I would like to recognize her for all the work that she has done and how she has helped shape Phoenix and the town, town area with her insight and her wisdom. You have seen many things happen within her tenure, so I want to thank Chris. And the last one, the last one, he's not gonna get away with me because I'm not sure what date he's gonna retire, and I don't know if we have a policy. So I want to recognize John Chan. John Chan has, you're gonna stand too, John. John Chan has been here for how many?
33.
33, okay. He needed a couple more for Inger. But I want to recognize him for his service. He has served in the many different capacities of departments at many different levels, and I want to thank him for that because we are losing a lot of knowledge, but you deserve it. Go enjoy your family, retire, and more than likely, you'll, I'll see you again. So I want to wish them a round of applause and best of luck.
I will continue in that vein. We are so blessed to have so many great people at the city of Phoenix, and we have a chance to celebrate great, great careers. In particular, today, I want to celebrate John Chan and his career, and it is an incredible career that began in 1992. We got a proud Sun Devil here, who has helped bring so many major employers to our city, including USAA, Charles Schwab, and American Express. He's helped develop our downtown with the Phoenix Biomedical Campus, destinations like Cityscape. He's helped bring the world's eyes to us and delivered incredible Super Bowls, All-Star Games, college football championships. He navigated the global pandemic, including doing steady leadership at the Convention Center that helped us become one of the, become the first public venue in Arizona to get a very high-level standard for health and safety. He served as Deputy City Manager and has mentored so many people who've gone on to incredible careers. And so I want to proclaim October 7, 2025, as John Chan Day and ask him to come forward.
Yeah, John, a huge thank you. For those of you wondering why there is no Inger proclamation, stay tuned for tomorrow. And we're also gonna get a chance to celebrate Christine Mackey. We are such fans of all of you and are so thankful to your service, but I decided you each deserve a separate day. So today is John Chan Day, and we hope that it is a great one. On a little bit more difficult note, wanted to express some sympathies to some of our sister cities. Type One was hit with a super typhoon that claimed more than 14 lives and injured 46 others due to flooding, and so we are mourning with our sister communities and the whole Mayor of Suan has activated emergency team around environmental challenges with the environmental challenge, and then our, the entire country of South Korea has been hit very far, hard by multiple data center fires, one that took 170 fire trucks to put out and took out more than 600 online government services, from paying taxes to getting a driver's license. So we are sending our best wishes for a speedy recovery to them, and both of those countries have significant delegations right now in Phoenix for Semi-Con West, a big week for our city, where we are welcoming the most important semiconductor conference in the West to Phoenix for the first time. And we're seeing great investments, including in our Arizona Science Center, in our Youth for Training, and more. So really happy to have that conference here, as well as Meeting on the Mesa, a regenerative medicine conference. So lots happening in Phoenix, and joining most of you and cheering on the Mercury, and so happy to have them in the WNBA Finals. And with that, I will turn to Councilwoman Hodge-Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I begin my PowerPoint, I also wanted to congratulate some of our city managers on their retirement. I'm gonna start off with our Community and Economic Development Director, Chris Mackey. It has been truly a pleasure working with you on so many projects within District Eight since I began on council, and I continue, I look forward to our continued partnership to see what we can work on together as you transition to the Greater Phoenix Economic Council. Thank you for your support in bringing Fire Station 69 to life and for allowing me to be an honorary economic developer. I look forward to our continued collaboration for a hospital in the South Mountain Village and a resort in Gila Foothills, PUD. I truly wish you the very best in all of your endeavors. It's been truly a joy working with you, and I look forward to continued partnership. Thank you for everything, Chris.
I also wanted to take a moment to recognize and thank Deputy City Manager John Chan for his incredible leadership and service at the city of Phoenix. John's professionalism, his calm demeanor, and deep commitment to public service has made such a meaningful impact, not only within City Hall, but across our entire community. John has been behind many of our, many of our major events in our city, such as Final Four, Super Bowl, and he has been for the one place that many of our visitors see, the Phoenix Convention Center. I just want to say thank you for your years of dedication, your teamwork, and the example you've set for all of us. It has been a true pleasure working alongside you, and I too wish you continued success and fulfillment in all that lies ahead. So Inger, I'm gonna hold mine still tomorrow, if that's okay with you?
Perfect. Okay, so over the last few weeks, my office and I have been very busy attending many community events, and I just wanted to highlight a few. Next slide. I attended the Phoenix Revitalization Corp. event in remembrance of 9/11. The group highlighted Central City Precinct Community Action Officer Jan Rowland, who helped with recovery efforts after the devastating incident in New York. I want to say again, thank you to Officer Rowland for his sacrifice and his continued support in keeping residents safe within our city. As many know, residents had raised some concerns at Mathews v. Henson, and I was able to host a senior safety event with them, where we were able to have direct conversation about their top priorities. And I'm pleased to say that we are working with housing and the fire department to address these concerns. Also, if you missed it, Harman Library turned 75 in a spectacular fashion, and it was amazing to see all of our community residents out, turn off for that event. Next slide. I want to thank Councilwoman Betty Guerrero and the Council General of Mexico, Jorge Mendoza Yesca, for inviting me to celebrate with them at their Grito celebrations. I also would like to highlight the Grand Open of Dahlia Village right in District Eight. It is, it was, I enjoyed connecting with residents, and I'm happy to see 126 more units of affordable housing being built right here in District Eight. Through a partnership with the city, the state, and other partners made it happen. Next slide. I attended the Levine Traditional School groundbreaking alongside Councilwoman Hernandez, and I'm looking forward to the future development in that area. The construction of a new school reflects growth, hope, and opportunities in that area, so I'm very excited about that. I also joined, Councilwoman Starks and I joined the Aviation Department for Wings for Autism event, where we met so many young individuals who were so excited to start to take their, their flight. It was truly a special moment as they were able to have not one, but two planes available for the families to, to participate on. This event is a great example of what being accessible and inclusive to all demographics looks like. I would also like to congratulate Adrian Garcia on celebrating one year of hosting Family First Friday events. I am grateful to have a small part through my participatory budget in keeping this event in existence. Our office sponsors the youth drawing art competi, art interactive piece at the First Fridays. If you have not seen it, I invite you to come on out and check it out. Next slide. I also would like to thank the Office of Emergency Management and partners for kicking off the Stop the Bleed Trauma Training right there in District Eight. Through our partnership, we not only learned lifesaving skills, but my office was able to fund 50 trauma kits for all attendees to take home. I want to give a special shout-out to the scouts from PAC 787 and Troop 244 for attending this session. If you missed the first one, I encourage you, there are still opportunities to sign up at other locations. You can find information on the city's website, or you can reach out to my office, and we'll help you get connected. Next slide. Lastly, I would like to thank Director Spencer Self and the entire Neighborhood Services Department on hosting a successful synergy conference. I would like to congratulate the District Eight residents who were selected as winners. I would like to congratulate the District Eight residents who were selected as winners, Janet Aviles from Sky Harbor Neighborhood Association, Isabel Gutierrez of South Mountain Block Watch, and Eva Olivas of Phoenix Revitalization Corporation. Thank you all for your contributions to District Eight, and I look forward to our continued success together. Next slide. As always, if you need any assistance or have any questions, please do not hesitate to reach out to myself and my team. Thank you, Mayor, that's all we have.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Does anyone have any additional updates, or shall we go to the main event? All right. Well, and one, that is a transition between council updates and our focus on accessibility. We are so pleased to welcome the National Federation of the Blind of Arizona and SAVI Services for the Blind who are here with us today. Earlier, we marked White Cane Safety Day to celebrate the white cane significance and the achievements of people who are blind or visually impaired. And we have done this for two years in a row and helps raise awareness, we hope, and make sure that we are a city that delivers on opportunities for all of our residents. The group was led by Jordan Moon, First Vice President and NFBA and Director at the SAVI Services for the Blind Phoenix Center. So thank you all for being with us. And before we go to our strategic workbook on accessibility, we will turn to our city manager for a budget update.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, for the time to walk you through what I think is a relatively positive budget outlook. This is a highlight of how we ended last fiscal year, which was 2024, 2025. I think, all things considered, we, we ended the year very strongly, considering the economic turmoil that the country and the state has been in from an economic perspective. I think the other thing that this presentation that Amber will highlight to you will emphasize the, the accuracy, the insane accuracy that our Budget and Research Department has, the variances that you see in revenue forecasting, as well as the expenses, all of which are under 1%, which, when you're talking over billions of dollars of revenue and expenses, it just doesn't happen across the country, and this is something that they continually and routinely deliver. So I want to, I want to applaud them and their hard work on that, but also, that goes hand in hand with your leadership as we continue to be able to provide the services to our residents. So I want to thank you for that as well. And so I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Amber Williamson, who also currently still wears the Budget and Research Director hat.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council, and our community. I am pleased to be here today to present to you our fiscal year 2425 general fund budget results. In addition to covering the results, I'm also going to be discussing some budgetary challenges that you need to consider as you move forward with budget decision-making for next fiscal year. I'll talk about the next steps in our budget development process, as well as provide an overview of the 2627 budget calendar that we are requesting approval today for. So in terms of 2425, our general fund resources, that does include our beginning fund balance, our revenues, and inter-fund transfers. We ended the year slightly over 15.7 million, that's a variance of just 0.7%. Actual resources represented by the green bar at $2,158.3 million, over the estimate represented by the blue bar at $2,142.6 million. In terms of our general fund operating expenditures for last fiscal year, the cost to deliver services to the community, we ended slightly over 4 million, or just a variance of 0.2% at $1,936.5 million. This results in a general fund ending balance for last fiscal year of $221.8 million, that's about 11.6 million higher than what we had estimated at $210.2 million. That 11.6 million is considered one-time savings. It will remain in our general fund balance and be factored into development of the 2627 budget status. We are recommending, Council, that 1.6 million of that one-time savings, provided that there is capacity, that we transfer that to the Housing Trust Fund. If you recall, Council approved transferring any additional American Rescue Plan Act interest to that trust fund based on the current balance, along with that 1.6 million, that would put the trust balance at 5.2 million. So in terms of budgetary challenges, there's no shortage of challenges for a city of our size. Top of mind right now, economic uncertainty. We are still dealing with uncertainty about trades, our trade agreements and tariffs. We are starting to see a softening in the labor market. We're still seeing some growth in terms of GDP, which is a common economic variable that measures the strength of the economy, but currently, we're in day seven of a federal government shutdown. There's a lot of uncertainty about that in terms of the impact to the broader economy, also city-specific programs and services. It's too early to know those impacts, we're going to be following it very closely. Obviously, the sooner that that concludes, the better, but we will keep Council apprised of any specific impacts to the city as we move forward. Also, the impacts just in general from the federal administration and the recently enacted One Big Beautiful Bill Act that was signed into law on July 4th. I'm going to show you momentarily some estimated impacts to state shared income tax revenue as a result of that act. Always, we're following what's going on at the state legislature as they enter their next legislative session, to be following any impacts to diminishment of your local control, diminishment of our revenues, or unfunded mandates. We're also going to be entering into labor negotiations with our employee labor groups. Their contracts expire June 30th of '26. We know that we did the class and compensation study, we did that to ensure that we can stay market competitive as much as possible. We want to ensure we have resources in our general fund and all of our funds to competitively pay our most important asset, our city employees. We are anticipating continued increases in our pension expenses, particularly for public safety, as well, as well as higher costs for our health insurance. So we'll be building in those cost increases into the proposed status in multi-year forecast. And then always, we are very closely following our revenue. We provide a monthly revenue report. We do rely on actual data to construct our estimates, but I can tell you preliminarily, at least based on two-month revenue numbers, it does look like we are tracking to our revenue estimations, which is good news, but two months does not a trend make. So we need more data, so we'll be working over the next several months to develop new estimates for the current year, as well as subsequent years for the forecast. As you know, voters approved our 2023 general obligation bond program. It's very exciting. As I've been telling council over the last couple of years, we want to make sure we have capacity in our general fund to bring on new fire stations and parks and community centers. Right now, we know that we're estimating about 11.6 million would be needed for 2627. We'll be working on updating those projections, but we'll include that in the multi-year forecast that we'll bring to you in February. And always, our community, as I like to say, they don't want less service or poor service. They accept enhanced service and they want exceptional service. And to do that, we have to have the resources to meet those expectations. And then for homelessness, if you recall, in the current year budget, we added 4.5 million to the general fund to continue the good work that the Office of Homeless Solutions is doing to help those in our community who are vulnerable. And in order to continue the work that they're doing, because of the expiration of the American Rescue Plan Act funds, the Office of Homeless Solutions estimates they'll need an additional $22 million, starting in fiscal 2627, from the general fund to continue that work. We also have aging city facilities. A city our size, we have significant major maintenance needs. We're also going to be building in those cost increases to the proposed budget. And then vehicle replacements, we have quite a fleet at the city of Phoenix. We want to make sure we're repairing and replacing our vehicles as necessary. The costs to do that are not going down, they're going up. So we'll be building those cost escalations into the forecast as well. For the One Big Beautiful Bill Act, according to the Joint Legislative Budget Committee recent information they provided, because of the tax code changes in that act, they are anticipating to see significant reductions in general fund revenue to the state's budget starting in the current fiscal year. As you can see, the table on the screen, 438.3 million in the current fiscal year, up to 371.9 million through fiscal '28. That does translate to a general fund impact to the city of Phoenix, because we do receive state shared revenue two years, based on collections from two years prior. The impact to the city of Phoenix could potentially be 21.7 million in fiscal year '27, '28, up to 18.4 mil-, I'm sorry, 18.4 million in fiscal '29, '30. That's a combined impact through the multi-year forecast period of 56.7 million. So we're going to follow this very closely. The FAC and JLBC will meet in January. We'll rely on that information to update any projections and include that in the multi-year forecast we'll present in February. In terms of next steps for budget development, we do have a pretty methodical approach in budget research. We work with all city departments. We're entering into a very busy time, three-plus-nine technical expenditure and revenue reviews. This is where we evaluate three months of actuals and we project out nine months of a forecast, as well as develop the projections for all of next fiscal year. In December, we'll move to central reviews, that's where we look at citywide expenditure line items like fuel, electricity, as well as pension. We'll be working through this period of time through February on program budget review. This is the time of year where we ask departments to evaluate their current suite of programs and services, evaluate if they can change their priorities, submit proposed budget reductions and priority order with least impact to the community if we had to take those reductions to balance the budget, as well as to ask for supplementals if resources are available. We'll also be working to develop our revenue estimations. We work with the University of Arizona on our econometric model that we use to estimate city and state sales tax. We'll be following the FAC and the JLBC as well. And then all of this comes together to bring to you and our community a new status for 2627, as well as the three-year, multi-year forecast. In terms of the budget calendar, this is presented, as I said, for approval by the council. In November, we will publish our annual inventory of programs document that contains a lot of great information at a programmatic level of all city funds and departments. That'll be available on our website at phoenix.budgets, or phoenix.gov/budget. In February, on February 24th, our general fund status and multi-year forecast will be presented. March 24th, we'll present the trial budget and the preliminary capital improvement program. April, we will do our annual community budget hearings, taking that proposed budget out to our residents to get their feedback. Come back on May 5th with the city manager's proposed budget. May 19th is scheduled for final council action on the budget, that's the time of the year that's very critical. Without that, we cannot move into legally required budget steps. June 3rd with tentative adoption, June 17th, final adoption, and wrapping up our process July 1st with property tax adoption. And with that, council, I can answer any questions.
Thank you so much. And maybe we'll begin first with a motion to approve the budget calendar.
I move to approve the budget calendar.
We have a motion and a second, and then we'll go to council member comments and questions, Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a few questions on this presentation. Just wanted to confirm that, sorry, one second. Confirm that in the beginning of it, we showed that we have 11.6 million one-time savings. So 10 million of that is going to be set aside, and 1.8 will be going into the Housing Trust Fund.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, the recommendation at this point in time is that we, we actually hold the entire 11.6 million. What we're recommending, though, is that we set aside that 1.6 million in the event that when Amber and the city manager present in February that multi-year forecast, if there is capacity, that 1.6 million gets transferred over to the Housing Trust Fund.
Okay, okay, that's.
So right now, it basically will sit there until we make sure that we can actually afford to do that and not have to make any cuts to do that.
Okay, and then, so we will know in February if we can actually move that additional money to the Housing Trust Fund?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much for that clarification. I think that would be a great investment. You know, I really, again, just want to thank Councilwoman Hush Washington for just really championing this on making more investments in the Housing Trust Fund. That's an area where we're continuing to see a lot of issues, and there's still a great need of more investments to be done in that department. So just thank you so much for, for prioritizing that. And then on the homelessness side, it looks like we are looking to find an extra $22 million to keep our regular OHS, sorry, the Office of Homeless Solutions. I'm trying to get away from using jargon for the public. Services in place. Have we identified any other grants or funding opportunities outside of the general fund where we are going to be able to potentially bridge that gap?
Mayor, members of the council, that's also a great question. We always analyze opportunities and look for NOFA's. At this point in time, we have not necessarily identified anything that could offload those programs from ARPA to the general fund. Also, as you all know, we're currently in the midst of a government shutdown as well, so not sure how that's going to play out. But this is something that we, that we knew was coming, because again, the ARPA funds were due to expire, we knew that. We had a plan, a strategic plan, that this council helped develop and put, put in place. And so the anticipated consequence of that was that we knew this program had to shift to the general fund. And so we started that last year with the four and a half million, as Amber mentioned, and then the balances the 22 once they completely exhaust all ARPA dollars.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Another area, right, that's really, really critical, we're going to have to make sure that services continue. And I think this administration, the federal administration continues to find ways to not only cut current grant funding that's available and current programs, that would help cities really address some of this issue. There was a point in the pension situation, just had a couple of questions around that. Our long-term goal is to get, or is it correct that our, would it be correct to say that our, our long-term goal is to get the police pension fully funded?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, also a great question. When you say fully funded, I would, as a former pension auditor, I would tell you that 100% pension isn't something that no one should ever really want to do, because it would honestly be a waste of money to get that far. Our sweet spot is somewhere between, I think, 75% and 80% is where we ideally want to get to. And under your leadership, your direction, as well as some of the input from our residents as they've, if we've done pension reform over the years, our COPERS pension is, is in that sweet spot right now. And what we're striving to do is get our public safety pension into that same area. Now, what I want to reference there is, you know, we control our COPERS pension for our civilians. We do not necessarily control directly the PSPRS pension, that's administered entirely by the state. We are a participant in that plan, but they have also made substantial reforms. Their reforms just happened after we made our reform, so it's going to take a little bit more time to actually reform those. So the goal is not to get to 100% funded, it's to get, in my opinion, to somewhere in that 75% to 80% range.
And currently, we are about where?
Uh, we're in the 40s. I can't remember the exact number off the top of my head.
And you said the goal is to get us to that sweet spot about, what, how many years are we talking about getting to that sweet?
Well, we, we actually have a closed amortization period on our pension, so, I mean, we're, we're somewhere in the 24 to 23-year range to get it theoretically paid off. But again, that, that's, that's going to be kind of a moving target. As, as costs continue to escalate on salaries, as stock market losses continue to happen, as people continue to live longer, right? That, that extends the, the amortization schedule for the pension.
Okay, thank you so much for that. Each year, we're also having to contribute extra payments to the police pension because we aren't meeting those obligations. Would that be a fair statement?
Uh, we, yes, Mayor, Mayor, members of the council, we do continue to add money to pensions, both on the civilian side and the, and the public safety side.
Okay. And can you, I think you already touched a little bit on why that is, can you expand a little bit more on why we make those extra payments?
Sure. You know, pension is, pension is one of those things that's kind of tricky for people to understand. You know, at the end of the day, I look at pension, it's almost like a mortgage, I think, for the average person to understand it. You have a 30-year mortgage and you finance that house over, over the course of 30 years, and over those 30 years, you're making payments in principal and interest payments. We're doing the same on the pension. The difference between the mortgage and a pension, your mortgage, unless you sign a variable rate mortgage, you have a defined amount that you're paying. With our pensions, there are lots of variables that go into making that payment amount that the city has to make. And again, some of those things are how much payroll grows or doesn't grow. The vacancies actually hurt us in public safety because the payroll's not growing to the extent that the actuary forecasted to do. So then the city's contribution rate goes up in a subsequent year to make up for that. On top of that, you have losses from the stock market, those are negative to the actual amortization. If you have a good year, those are positive, they're accretive to the bottom line. And then, again, life expectancy, over the years, actuaries, they look at different mortality tables. If, you know, certain members live longer, live shorter, that also extends or has a positive or negative effect on the, on the pension itself. So those are the variables that make it up. And in any given year, if the actuary's expectations don't happen, then that puts upward pressure on the city's rate that we have to contribute to, to keep the pension funded.
All right, thank you. And that might be the best example to use a mortgage to try to get folks to understand the pension piece. I know it's helped me over the multiple times I have asked questions around this piece, so thank you so much just for trying to get me, giving me education to try to understand it more. I think my last question on this piece is, you know, instead of continuing to bridge that gap in the pension, in the police pension with general fund money, have we considered, like, as a council, have we considered finding other areas in the police budget that could sustain those invest, that can sustain those payments, or those payments can be made from?
Mayor, members of the council, we, we've done a lot of analysis on public safety pension and pension as a whole. Like I said, the city is, the council as a whole, as well as our residents, have been very actively and committed to pension reform. So we, we take pensions seriously, and what you've, you adopt annually a pension policy that dictates several things. One, we pay our pension payments early so that we can get credit for them, and they actually have more impact than paying them later. As far as looking at the public safety budgets themselves, just like all of our other departments, since the- since the Great Recession, I think all of our departments have been, they've been picked fairly clean. There's not a lot of fat in departments. I know people think there is, but the reality is budget and research through their three-plus-nine process, they do a very good job at beating departments up and finding money that's hidden under the couch cushion, if you will. And so at this point, when you look at most of our city departments, 80% or so of our budget is people, it's personal services. So there really isn't a lot of extra to cut out of the public safety budgets because what's not people for police and fire, you've got vehicle costs, you've got fuel costs, you've got other things that sustain the services that they provide to residents. So as much as it pains me to say this, the reality is the only way out of the pensions situation that we find ourselves in is time and more money.
Thank you so much for that, Jeff. I had a couple of questions on the adoption, on the budget adoption calendar. You know, we're moving into the beginning of the new budget process. So I know we're going to start, you're going to be, well, the budget department's going to be very, very busy with that. You know, prior to joining this council, obviously, I think a lot of staff has seen me here during the budget process and voicing concerns for how that process just goes on. And I think that's one of the things I have always struggled with, is just the calendar itself. What dates on this process for our calendar, for the budget process, is set by state statute?
Councilwoman Hernandez, Mayor, members of the council, it's really when we get into our legally required budget steps. So that's tentative adoption, final, and then the property tax levy adoption. But you have to back up from those legally prescribed dates in order to make presentation of the budget. The other thing to keep in mind is for us to formulate our estimations and to come up with a budget status, that takes months of time. So we have to collect actual data and wait on information, in some cases, such as pension, in order to formulate projections. So the budget calendar is set by statute and city charter, but it's also set the way that it is to allow us to do proper budgetary analysis based off the most recent actuals. You have to adopt the budget by July 1st of every year. So we don't have a lot of flexibility or time to change those dates.
Okay, thank you for that. And that's one of the pieces that is, I think, a lot of the residents might not have a grasp on or haven't, don't understand why the calendar is dictated that way. You know, my biggest concern in this area is the opportunity for community to really provide feedback into what our budget, our general fund budget looks like. You know, we're, on the calendar, you know, we're going to have community hearings in April, but that's in April, right, where most of the work on the budget has already been done. So how do we, as a city, meaningfully incorporate the community feedback in building this budget?
Yes, that's a good question, Councilwoman Hernandez, Mayor, members of the council. So our residents have opportunities to provide input about what they would like to see in the budget all year. They're not only, you know, it's not designated only as April. So they can contact the Budget and Research Department by phone, through email, submit comments through our website. They can contact each mayor and city council office to provide all of you with the input on what they would like to see in the budget. The way that the process is set in terms of the budget hearings that we do and that big kind of community engagement process in April is because we don't have anything to take to our residents in terms of a proposed budget that they could provide the feedback on until then because of how I just explained about needing a lot of months of time in order to do our budget estimations, as well as actual data. So residents can provide input all throughout the year. But that's why we do that, that community engagement process specifically in April because now we have a proposed budget to actually take to them for their feedback.
Okay, thank you for that, Amber. Do we know how many community meetings we will be having this upcoming budget cycle? I think last year, there was like one in each district, maybe, or?
Yes, Councilwoman Hernandez, Mayor, members of the council, we did a total of 12 community budget hearings. So we also did two virtual hybrid hearings here in the chamber that are considered citywide. We would probably be looking to do about the same amount of hearings, but that would be subject to the requests of the city council. And we can formulate over that next couple of months in terms of that calendar. We do need several months of planning, just logistically, to make those hearings happen. But that's right now, at least, our plan, is to do the same number that we did last year.
So for example, if I have a specific area of the community, of the district that reaches out, hey, we would like to have one, we've never had one before, with plenty of notice, we could try to plan to take them a community budget hearing during the budget cycle or during the April, or maybe even before.
That's correct. We can work with your office to identify if you wanted to have more than one specific budget hearing just for your district. We can absolutely work with you to accommodate that.
And Councilwoman Hernandez, that's what I was going to add additionally. Those are the formal prescribed meetings that we post for, you know, mass production and outreach. But we also go to neighborhood meetings. I know we go to the council vice mayor's breakfast sometimes and present. I've gone to Councilwoman Pastor's meetings. I've gone to District 8. So we will go where you want us to go. They just may not be, you know, part of that big massive schedule that we do for the actual formal schedule. But if you have one-offs, we definitely will try to make ourselves available.
No, thank you for that. I think that's the most important part, is figuring out ways to bring in that input so that the residents feel like, hey, I really do, I really did have an opportunity to share my concerns and what I want to see in the budget in the year coming up, right? And what is being, what the city is investing in. I know there's disconnect there, and there's communities that feel like their ideas haven't been listened to, and they've only ever been allowed the April option to contribute or to try to provide feedback. So you spoke a little bit about why we do those in April. So just to clarify, the timing for the department to get the proposed budget is why we hold off until April to do the community, the big community piece for the budget?
Yes, Councilwoman Hernandez, Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. So what we're taking to the community in April is the proposed trial budget that's presented to the council in March. So up until that time, we have nothing to present to the community in terms of our available resources potentially to add additional items to the budget for the next fiscal year. That's why traditionally, we have always done those budget hearings in April.
Okay, thank you so much. And this will be my second budget vote coming up next year, right? So it'll be the first full process. So just thank you for being willing to sit with the D7 office team to like help us learn and get up to speed on the entire process. And I will say that I much prefer the city budget process to the state legislature budget process where there's like zero opportunity for community input and even for some legislator input. So I, just comparing both, I hats off to y'all for, while I have my own concerns with this process, much better than down the street, just in the way that it's worked and the information is provided out and the opportunity for us to really get priorities in there. So just wanted to share that.
Councilwoman Hodge Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to start off by expressing my gratitude to the city manager's office and our Budget and Research Department. I think our, the, time after time, since I've been on council three years, each time the variance has been less than 1%. That is impressive, and that is no small feat. So I wanted to say that's a job well done by our department. I'll start off by that. I also wanted to ask real quickly if we can tell our community, because we get, my office has gotten some questions, if we can give us an idea, a general idea of the impact of the federal shutdown, how it was impacting city services. I've tried to assure them, but maybe if they hear that from someone who, a little higher up in the food chain, they would believe me.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington, that is also a great question, and it's something that's top of mind for a lot of folks these days. I think we sent and shared some information with mayor and council a few weeks ago. Basically, what we're trying to do is monitor the situation. A lot of us are still flying blind, just like I think they are in DC. But our departments are well-prepared for this. This isn't, unfortunately, our first shutdown. And so we think in the short term, and I define short term within like that four-to-six-week sweet spot, so if it lasts within that range, we think we're going to be okay for most of our programs and services that provide grant fund, that are provided by grant funding. If it starts to extend beyond that, that's when we're going to have to start to really look in, see whether or not we've got the resources to continue, or we have to, you know, play around with the program a little bit to extend it and make it, make it last. When you look at the last few shutdowns, they've lasted about, you know, a month. The last, the one before that, I think, was five days. So they've gone, you know, between a month, month and a half, sometimes longer. But in the short term, I think we're okay. So I think what I would like to project to residents in this particular moment, right now, we are okay. Right now, the city of Phoenix is still able to provide the same level of services that we were providing at the beginning of the fiscal year. If we start to run into, I think, later this month, early next month, that's when I think we'll be talking to you about some of those challenges and how do we continue delivering those services. So I think we'll just keep monitoring the situation. We'll keep you apprised of any changes that we're aware of when they happen. And that's what I would say to that question.
Thank you so much for that. Speaking of maintaining the level of service that we, that our residents have grown accustomed to, I think it's also worth noting that although we have provided for additional funding through the comp and class and comp study, we have departments that have been able to manage the increased personnel costs while also maintaining service levels. Are there any lessons learned on how we do it so well?
I'll actually defer that question to Lori, put her on the spot because, you know, she was the former HR director and was very intimately involved in HR. What I would start off with, though, is say that, you know, class and comp didn't happen in a vacuum, and it didn't happen by itself. You guys see the value, as a collective, you see the value in our employees. Our employees provide an immense service to our residents, and they do that, you know, with a smile. Many of our employees see our residents on their worst day, and they come back day after day, and they deliver, and they deliver, and they deliver. We, myself included, as well as you, we get lots of accolades for the work that our employees do. And I think that's something that we all have to remember. But I'll turn it over to Lori.
Thanks, Jeff. Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hodge Washington. What I will add to that is that one of the things that we've learned is that we valuing our employees has resulted in lower turnover rates. We have been very successful in maintaining our workforce and lowering both our vacancy and our turnover rates, actually, over the last couple of years. And that has been a byproduct of your leadership and your foresight in saying, we want to make sure that we are hiring and retaining the most talented workforce available to us. And I think that's what we are now doing, and that's allowed us to retain folks who have not only institutional knowledge, but high, you know, highly honed skills that we need here at the city of Phoenix. And we, of course, have a variety of different job classifications, almost 900 job classifications represented across the city. So I think one of those biggest lessons is really, you know, making sure that we are communicating to our employees that they are valued and compensating them fairly for the work that they perform, and that is paying dividends, and we're seeing that in those turnover and vacancy numbers.
Thank you. I agree, I couldn't agree more with your sentiments. I think many times, our residents say, the city hasn't done this, or the city hasn't done this, and they forget that the city is actually employees, like many of them, who are here today, and it's our employees that make our city function. So I agree, and I thank you for that. I just want to, in closing, I just want to take a moment, also, to thank you for including the Housing Trust Fund as a priority for the upcoming budget. We recognize that housing and homelessness continues to be one of the top issues that we hear from our residents. And by providing, hopefully, we have the tools to continue to provide some additional support as we move forward. We are seeing changes from our, and impacts from our shared revenue from the state, as well as we're seeing the impacts from our federal government. And I think having a Housing Trust Fund will give us the opportunity to have a little bit more direct ability to control an issue that is so important to so many of our residents. So I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody that has been part of this budget and the beginning of this forecast and where we're headed. One of the budget challenges ahead, which I am, I watch, and I watch it for employees, is health insurance. And one of the things that I want to be very cognizant of, and the trust committee, is that health insurance is rising. So when that, when health insurance rises, they start cutting left and right to keep the insurance down. And they start cutting, or they start looking at different areas of limitation, I guess maybe I should say. And so I, out to the labor groups, is to really look at the insurance to make sure we're still getting quality of insurance. And in particular, where I really look and start to study is in the area of our public safety and making sure that if they have a cancer occurrence, that they're able to get what they need in order to kill it and survive and save their life, along with police. So I'm just doing that out for our labor groups to really look at that, look at the wellness piece and the quality of life because all employees sacrifice. And what I mean by sacrifice, this is their second family. Sometimes it's their first family. And we need to be able, as a city, to also be able to protect them and give them the quality of insurance that is needed for them. The other piece is the homelessness piece. I thought, and I may be wrong, or maybe we did, I thought in increasing a tax that we were also increasing or was going to be able to maintain our services in the homeless front. But what I am seeing and hearing is 22 million. And so I think at a certain point, we are going to get to a space where we're not going to be able to afford these homeless services. Or we're going to have to sacrifice something for something else. And I think that needs to be a really deep conversation with council and public to understand what we are doing. I want to say we are probably the number-one city that has tried to provide as many services as possible and have a variety of different ways of doing it. But there's a certain point where we're going to get to capacity, and we are going to need help. So my point is, is that we, I would like staff to start figuring out, other than the general fund, how we are going to meet the 22 million. And if we're not, to say, we're not going to be able to do it. That's one point. The other piece is that I just happened to be, right before I entered, getting articles on homelessness and the fact that we are ranking in the top 20, or top 10, and this is from the US News, that we are number 10. And I'm curious, and I'm sure many others are curious, is what is attracting, or what are we, how are we attracting, how are we ranking at this level and attracting the numbers that we are attracting? And what can we do, or what is it? And then I read another article, and I thought, okay, the numbers are wrong, but both articles seem to have the same about numbers, 14,000. And in that one, we are ranking out of the 2013. So I think we also have to have another bigger conversation as to what is the epidemic, or what is the causing our rise in this space? Could be jobs, it could be addiction, it could be a number of things, behavioral health, mental health. But how do we really start working with our other partners or other municipalities to really start to identify, okay, you have the capability, like public health, the capability of putting your arms around this, and can you take this on? We'll take this on, and can you help over here? Those are just my general conversation, I mean, general thoughts. As stated earlier, our employees are our backbone. So we will, and have that conversation of what it looks like to maintain and keep our employees at the level that we can keep them. We are losing employees to not only different cities, but we're losing them for different states because they get paid more. And there's no way we can compete with that. And the question is more of, how do we compete with that? How do we get there, and how do we compete with that? We are losing a lot of talent, and it's fast and furious right now. And I'm not sure where we'll be, at what point we're going to settle. But those are my concerns. But those are my concerns of the budget and to really look at that. And also, community and what their needs are is very important. So those are just my statements.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Hernandez. Vice Mayor, did you want to go first?
No.
Great, Councilwoman Hernandez.
Okay. Sorry, Mayor, I thought of another question. Recently, Amber, you mentioned the impacts from state legislation on our city budget. Recently, in this last session, Governor Hobbs signed the bill to invest money into upgrades and repairs to the Diamondback Stadium. Can you explain or share with or answer for me if that bill and the tax money over the next 30 years, what impact are we going to see from our tax money side into our budget moving into next fiscal year in the context of everything else that kind of has developed now?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Hernandez, good question. And you know, the mayor is actually very good at this one too because she worked really hard to bring that bill home and get it signed ultimately. A lot of that really is dependent upon how much revenue the Diamondbacks generate in that facility. And so the way the structure of the agreement is set up, you know, they have to kill it in order to eat it. So if they don't generate the revenue, they don't get city money from us. So what the state has committed to, I think, is much, it's a much larger number than what we've committed to. So for us, it's really dependent on exactly what they generate. There are estimates, they're all over the place, you know. I did an estimate at one point in time that took the original bill and it said it could be up to $15 million depending upon, you know, how much money they generate, gate sales, ticket sales, merchandise, all of those things. The mayor and her team and Frank McKeon pushed back and we got those numbers down drastically, almost cut in half, I think a little less than half. And so, you know, we estimate somewhere between, I'd say, five to seven million dollars a year on a good year. And so that's what we expect. But again, they have to actually generate it. And not only do they have to generate it, they have to be able to justify and document and show us that they've actually generated that amount of money. And so there will be some oversight involved in that process as well.
Okay, thank you for that. It was just interesting to see that. And now with the other changes that have happened from the federal level that are going to impact our budget and their terrible season, I was like, why are we giving them this money just to be even worse? So, you know.
I'd rather not talk about baseball right now.
Okay, fine. But just wanted to make sure I understood if we were going to see any immediate impact from that bill specifically into the Phoenix budget moving as we shift into next year.
It was bad enough. Councilwoman Hodge Washington had Dodger blue on in her jersey. It's for District Eight. That was bad enough.
Well, there's two of us now.
Are you a Dodgers fan?
I am, I am. But born and raised here in Phoenix, that's my only outside team I support because my dad would play the games on the radio. And we were Valencia households.
I agree. I was raised, well, wait, wait. I'll tell you, what I was just going to say is I was raised by a grandfather Dodgers because that's what we would listen to on the radio. So I learned to listen and sit still. But then the TV came about. The only difference is that I always went opposite of him, so. But yes, I was raised in that type of household.
Yeah. I think I aged myself by saying we would listen to the games on the radio, so.
I'm sorry, I got everyone off track.
It's okay.
All right, additional comments on the budgets, on the budget. All right. And we still feel the impact of residential rental and so many of the past cuts, so tough, tough. All right, then with that, this one can be a voice vote. And again, it is on to adopt the calendar. All those in favor of adopting the calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? So by, with one opposed, the budget calendar passes. And now we get to go to item two, which to me is the main event. We try to be a city that is accessible for all and we've in many times in history led the way, but we cannot rest. We're not done after today, but we have a lot of progress to report and that would not be possible without Councilwoman Deborah Stark, who has been chairing this effort. I will turn it over to her to introduce item two.
Thank you, Mayor. I think a couple of years ago, you and I were talking a little bit about what I was doing in my house. That was senior proofing my house. I am aging in place and I want to make sure that I continue to live there. But I know as I get older, I am faced with disabilities. Already I've lost a lot of my hearing and thank goodness for staff. They give me a computer so I can watch everyone speak closed caption. So thank you, staff, for that. I think Denise, you put it so well. 80% of the American population will experience disability, maybe not long term, but short term. And so it really is an issue that isn't just for a small percentage of American population, but it's for all of us. And so I thank the mayor for her commitment towards this. I will let you know though, even though we have become even more committed, we've always been committed. And Councilwoman Hodge Washington and I are wearing our compassion cactus lanyards from the airport. These signify, if you're wearing one, staff will know that you may need some additional assistance, whether it's autism or hearing impaired or sight impaired. It alerts our staff that we need to make sure we're being compassionate. So we've always tried to be forward in our thinking when it comes to accessibility. But over the last year, we've really done a lot more and I'm going to turn it over to them. And thank you so much for listening to us about the budget and that a lot of them are Dodger fans on this. I'm not one of them.
Yeah, that was new news to me. All right. Mayor and council, thank you so much for this opportunity to present to you today. I'm honored to be joined by community leaders and staff to walk through the final report and the transition plan from the Strategic Work Group on Accessibility. Today, we have Darryl Christensen, Michael Hammett, Denise Resnick, Judy Burrows, Nicole Anderson and myself, who will be going through the presentation. And as they introduce themselves, they'll tell you a little bit more about themselves and their role in this particular group today. Over the past year, the work group has been deeply committed to advancing Phoenix's mission on becoming the most accessible city in the world. This goal will help members of the community, such as adorable, such as the adorable young girl shown on this slide, which happens to be Nicole's daughter as well, and others living with a disability feel more independence and inclusion in Phoenix. Today's presentation will highlight the progress we've made, the voices we've heard and the foundation we've laid for the future. The Strategic Work Group on Accessibility was established in August of 2024 by City Manager Jeff Barton, following Mayor Gallegos' call to action in her 2024 State of the City address. The work group focused on three key domains, physical infrastructure, digital environment and social awareness. The group was chaired by Councilwoman Stark, who you just heard from, and included 20 leaders throughout the community and many of which are shown in this photograph on the slide. Some are even here in the audience today, just right behind us. So thank you to this group. It was a wonderful group to really work with. I do want to express my gratitude to our chairperson, Councilwoman Stark, and the rest of the group for their service. So thank you. Our overarching goal was to identify opportunities to improve city services and ensure that accessibility is embedded as a core value of city operations. And I think you're going to hear that it was throughout this presentation. This work has been guided by the mayor's vision as a Phoenix as a global model of accessibility. To understand the importance of this work, we must begin with the people we serve. As of the most recent census, it's estimated that approximately 12% of Phoenix residents, or around 200,000, are living with one or more disabilities, which are listed on the slide. And you can see there are anywhere from hearing difficulties, vision, ambulatory, independent living and a few others. These numbers are not only statistics, but they represent our neighbors, our coworkers, family members, our friends and in some cases, ourselves. When we make Phoenix more accessible for them, we make it better for everyone, including our businesses, our economy and our entire community. As a demonstration of our work, we have a brief video that I'll turn to and share the alignment with Comprehensive Social Awareness Campaign, which we'll discuss later.
Phoenix is a city on the rise because of the people who call it home. And our infrastructure ensures that every resident has the opportunity to contribute. Accessibility isn't about doing more for some. It's about building a community that works better for all. One way lives can change is through employment. Work is a chance to learn and grow. At Arizona Industries for the Blind, people are building successful careers, supporting their families and fueling our economy. Each person is proof that when barriers are removed, lives can change.
From a very young age, I was given a ceiling for my life. But working here honestly taught me that there's no such thing as a ceiling. AIB taught me self-autonomy. I have advanced so much. I'm able to accomplish anything as long as I'm just given the tools and the resources.
Working is more than just putting food on the table. We've celebrated three team members with 30 years of work experience here. They've been able to buy homes, put kids through school, travel, do the things that they want to do. It all comes from having a steady income and having that security, that place to go back to.
Building spaces where people can live confidently is key to a thriving city. Inclusive housing options create new possibilities for what it means to call Phoenix home.
First Place is a supportive housing property where people choose to live here. Our residents have autism, Down Syndrome or intellectual developmental disabilities. And so when we created First Place, it was focused on health and education and training and employment. It was designed to be a place where people would learn to live and people would live to learn. The creation of First Place took a lot longer than I thought it would. And every step of the way, we recognized the value we were creating for this community.
At the end of the day, as Matt's mom, that's what's most important, is to make sure that we have created a place in the world for him and more places in the world for people like him. Because when we get it right for people with disabilities, we'll get it right everywhere.
Community is where connection happens. Across Phoenix, people come together to learn from and support one another. Phoenix's adaptive recreation programs offer lifelong opportunities for residents to build skills, confidence and friendship. Every day, people like Antoine, Eddie and Nate take part in hands-on learning programs that combine recreation with real-world skills, from art and cooking to teamwork and communication. For many, this space is where they discover a sense of belonging. Nate, who has been with the program for 16 years, loves sports. Through the city's adaptive recreation programs, he's developed his passion for sports into something more. This year, he earned a spot on the city's Special Olympics team, representing Phoenix in the upcoming Arizona Special Olympics competition. Through these programs, Phoenix is helping build stronger communities where every resident has the chance to build a meaningful and connected life. Across Phoenix, people are shaping their futures through employment, independence and community connection. When we help build a city that supports these pillars, we help build a better future for all.
Mayor, members of council, so that was created by our city's communication team and I think they did a fantastic job. And that end slide you saw that had the active adjective words that really describe what we want the city to be, you're going to hear more about that as we go through the presentation. But I think they did a fantastic job on that and I think it's going to be something that really resonates with the community. Today, you're going to hear first from each of the subcommittees, Physical Infrastructure, Digital Environment and Social Awareness. They're going to talk to you about their key accomplishments and the long-term goals going forward. Then we're going to highlight the additional accessibility initiatives that we've already done through the city departments over the years. And then finally, we'll outline the transition of this work to the Mayor's Commission on Disability Issues, ensuring that we keep moving and our momentum keeps going beyond today. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Darryl Christensen. He'll present on the Physical Infrastructure Committee.
Thank you, Edgar. Mayor Gallego, members of the council. My name is Darryl Christensen and I was born back in Minnesota. I'm still a Twins fan, so. I am not a Dodgers fan. With two disabilities, I was born without my right arm and totally blinded my right eye from birth. Certainly hasn't slowed me down at all. And I moved to Phoenix back in 98, so I've been here 27 years, proud resident. Recently, about a year and a half ago, I retired after a 37-year career in working with nonprofits, working with people with disabilities to increase independence for everyone. I am a person with a disability. I am not defined by my disability, but it's a part of me. And that's the same with the different variations of disabilities that was mentioned in the earlier slide. As I say, I retired a year and a half ago, but I'm still very involved with the community and very a proud member of the Physical Infrastructure Subcommittee. The first slide shows a gentleman with his guide dog going along the light rail with the truncated domes and such along the light rail line. The Physical Infrastructure Subcommittee worked on several initiatives. There's actually five key, well, let me see, let me go to the next one here. So the challenges that were identified by our group, looking at gaps in the building codes to ensure consistent citywide accessibility in both public and private developments. Also, the need for educational resources and standards to support the implementation and enforcement of such codes. The key accomplishments are fivefold. One is the Residential Building Code Amendments. My dear friend, Councilmember Stark and I met in December of '23, I believe it was, at a cafe and started the work. And then Mayor Gallego's work group started in '24. This is something that is very important and I'll talk about it in a bit. Also, secondly, to address the ADA, Americans with Disabilities Act, not the American General Society today, or the American Dairy Association. To address the ADA compliance gaps that exist in city facilities. Third, the Tactile Directional Indicators, or what is TDIs. Save Our Space Campaign, a decades-old model program. And then also, fifth, to promote inclusive design in public and private spaces. So as we look at the first one, the building codes. And this is something that I and others have worked on here in Phoenix for 25 years. Back in the year 2000, this work started. So I personally was absolutely thrilled when you, the council, unanimously passed our updated building codes on June 18th that became effective August 1st. This will have huge, huge impacts positively for our entire community. Not only for those who have a current disability, but who may have a temporary disability or folks who want to move to the city and can look at housing in a better way for all families. For example, young families with strollers and walkers and then midlife with onset of a disability and then later aging in place. This really reduces the cost of retrofitting homes for aging in place. So less and less will people have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars for home modifications. And this is modeled after successful policies in other communities. These types of codes that we passed have been in place in other communities for over 30 years, tried and true. We have two jurisdictions here in Arizona that passed this 20 years ago. So I'm thrilled that we did this this summer. So for that, again, I deeply appreciate your support in passing the residential building codes. Secondly, the ADA building code gaps. The committee looked at identifying gaps between the ADA and local building codes and there are some. So while the city adopts building codes for the International Building Council, there are some differences that still exist. So the Planning and Development Department is tasked with permitting and inspecting to verify compliance to the building code, which leaves some additional ADA requirements unmet. Conversations are ongoing about adding the ADA compliance program to the review process for city-owned buildings and continue to work towards closing this gap. We've also provided visual aids for private property owners as well. We've also provided visual aids for private property owners as well. The tactile directional indicators. These assist folks with visual impairments. And we had a great group here in the audience earlier. Some are still with us. For residents to navigate those integrated pedestrian areas. It can be intersecting with bike paths, light rail designs. And currently, there is a pilot project underway at 12th Street in Moreland. It's also, Valley Metro is actually incorporating TDIs, tactile directional indicators, in the capital extension plan. So this is another method for folks with various types of disabilities to really move about in their community of choice in the ways that they can more independently. The next picture shows a gentleman with a phone getting into a Waymo. There's no water around him, so I think he's good. Good, good. The audience got that. Good. The Save Our Space Campaign, this again, as I say, is a decades-old program. That's a model program that educates the public about leaving accessible spaces available for those who need them. So many times over my lifetime, I've seen someone traipse into an accessible parking spot. I point out that they don't have the proper indicators with the front tag or license plates indicating a need. And I say, you know, excuse me, could you just move? So because you're illegally parked in an accessible spot? Well, I'm just going in for a gallon of milk. I'll be right back. Well, you know, someone else may be coming up and needing that space. So we're really looking to use the spaces for folks that need it. And so the work is led by the Phoenix Police Department's Accessibility Compliance Enforcement Program. And that's made up of volunteers, community volunteers, who are trained and equipped to educate the community and issue citations for accessible parking violations. When needed, Neighborhood Services Code Enforcement Division has the authorization to issue citations for these code violations and will continue to work collaboratively to formalize a process for enforcing commercial accessible parking spaces. So great work is being done for decades, and we're moving it even further. Our fifth and final area for our Physical Infrastructure Subcommittee is looking at how the, we looked at how private community and property accessibility involvement programs and how the city, as well as other governmental agencies, they have jurisdictional limitations to assist private property owners, such as HOAs, schools, and 55-plus communities. So the city is certainly committed to providing reasonable accommodations whenever possible. Unfortunately, there are no grants available for this purpose. But educational resources for these HOA schools and 55-plus communities are provided for permitting guidance and direction, how they best conserve their communities. So another picture here in the slide is a gentleman walking his guide dog across a crosswalk. And this is looking at long-term goals and community feedback. So our long-term goals are to improve ADA compliance in city inspections, to standardize TDIs, which have received positive community feedback and in building codes, to formalize enforcing those commercialized accessible parking spaces that should be developed, as we mentioned. And the last point on this slide, folks, is that the community praised inclusive code changes in the rollouts. As more and more people hear about the work that this work group has done in the last 14 months, people are excited. People are seeing a difference. The word on the street is getting out there. So I am so proud that, you know, I've talked to other members here. We say, you know, you go to so many committees and you don't know if you're making a difference. And say, well, there was another meeting. But with this subcommittee and this work group that Mayor Gallego founded, we're making a difference and the community is seeing it. So at that, I'd like to turn it over to my dear friend and colleague, Michael Hammott, who is the Chief Innovation Officer with the city.
Thank you, Daryl. And thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to be here. And for our community members who are joining us, I will introduce myself and the connection to this work. I am Michael Hammott, as Daryl said, the Director of the Office of Innovation. We are celebrating four years now of the office being launched. So we're really excited about that. And the whole idea of the office was to advance innovation, strategic use of data, and smart technologies across the city. And everything we do connects with priorities of Mayor, Council, and the city manager, and our community. So this is particularly special. It's been an honor to serve on the Strategic Work Group on Accessibility. And I'm really excited to share the great work of the Digital Environment Subcommittee. And it has been impressive. And I do want to point out the young lady on the screen, Brianna. She is using digital services at the library, and we will be talking about that coming up a little later. So at the onset of this, we set some challenges for ourselves. And we looked at better integration of assistive technologies into city services, the need for a cohesive, scalable digital ecosystem that serves users of all abilities. And you can see a young man who utilizes a wheelchair, and he's being assisted onto our public transit. The digital environment, as we all know, is fast advancing. And so the challenges we talk about, we see as opportunities, and we are really seizing those opportunities. Some key accomplishments. This is an image of our Deputy Aviation Director, Matt Hile, navigating Phoenix Sky Harbor. Phoenix Sky Harbor is a leader in accessibility. And we're going to talk about one of their award-winning projects, digital projects that we are advancing at the city. We have a language translation tool that we're excited about. It's AI-powered, and that is being advanced in our library system. Our Smart Cities Roadmap. When I mentioned setting the course and really a foundation for all of this work, this Smart Cities Roadmap is going to be directional for what we need to do today, but where we are going and how we can get there. And because of this work group, we have embedded accessibility into this with our consultants. The City Manager's Performance Dashboard. City Manager Barton set the course with this dashboard in 2022 to have this be continuously improved upon. So it was ever-evolving. And this, we'll be talking about, is an enhancement for accessibility that's really exciting for us. And then our Innovate Phoenix Challenges. These are events that we host. We've had five where we spend a day with community, developing solutions to pressing challenges. We're going to talk about accessibility. And our Street Transportation Department. You'll see digital kiosks popping up around downtown. And we have those kiosks that are really driven with ADA at the beginning and accessibility. So excited to talk about that. So the Innovate Phoenix Challenge event, we had our latest in May of 2025. On May 15, we had 150 people turn out for this. And the basic approach was to really develop solutions around smart cities. We focused in on public spaces and accessibility. And this was going to inform our digital Smart Cities Roadmap as well as potential outcomes from this that we could test and implement. The work group member sitting beside me, Daryl, Daryl was a judge. And you'll see him in the image here with the other three judges that really spent a lot of time with five groups of people, determining who had the greatest idea. Daryl, we're really proud to say, has served twice as a judge. He's the only person that has. He was on our very first in 2023. We set the ground with accessibility, but this work group has taken it to a whole new level. So thank you, Daryl, for being there. And again, the winning ideas that came out of this and all of the ideas, frankly, are being explored right now. And our next event will be in January of 2026. And now I'd like to show you a quick video from that event.
So this is the Fifth Venture Cafe City of Phoenix Hackathon. It's an all-day hackathon where members of our community come together and they hack solutions to top city priorities. Today, we're hacking solutions to smart cities. And we're focusing on three key areas: accessibility, public spaces, and transportation. This is the first time we have about 60 participants coming together. We randomly assign them teams, and they work together as teams all day to hack on the problem. And they do dry runs through their pitches. And then they pitch onstage at Venture Cafe tonight for a chance for cash prizes as well as audience choice.
Tonight, as a judge for the hackathon, I'm really looking toward seeing what the groups have outlined for accessibility, for all types of disabilities in the community. So a smart city to me really means that it's accessible for everybody.
So we looked at how can we improve the public transportation system in Phoenix? And so what we looked at doing is essentially finding a way to collect and leverage data using AI technologies so that we can better service a wider range of people, provide better accessibility, and make buses more useful for people who live in Phoenix.
And the video you just saw. Shortly after that event, we had a chance to present it at a Smart Cities event in Finland outside of Helsinki. And this were, you had elected officials and city leadership from around the world, including cities in California, Texas, the Netherlands, Spain. And this was presented to show what we're doing in the world of smart cities with a special focus on accessibility. It was very well-received at that event. And I'd like to thank Devranya Dasi for putting that together. And the communications team, they made that possible. And now, I mentioned earlier, the Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport and some of the accessibility advancements. In 2023, the airport won a IDC North America Smart Cities Award for their accessibility. One of the components of that was hearing loop technology. So through this work group, we looked and thought, could this be implemented here in council chambers? And so we worked with our IT department and Public Works to do a test recently. It was very successful. And now we're implementing this technology into council chambers within the next month. And what it does is it directly connects an intercom system to a hearing aid. And you'll see on the screen, there's a visual of an ear with a little bit of a T on there and what looks like a technical hash. That's an identifier for folks that need that service. So that will be used for marketing as well for this. And so we're really excited to have this advance and see where it goes beyond council chambers. And a language translation tool, it's called ILA. It's AI-powered. This was something that came to our attention through the Hive at our Housing Department. The vendor was willing to meet with some of our departments and test this out and kind of see if it had implications beyond the Hive. And the response was great from departments. And the first to jump on board was Library, Erin McFarlane. And Erin ordered 12, implemented them very quickly. And we're already hearing results from this. What is great, they're easy to use. They can auto-detect a language. They have 220-plus languages. And they also have human translation within it to ensure what is input into the system has that human touch to it, aside from just technology. And you can add specific department or specific industry language as well to this. According to the library, Carl Kendall, 270 sessions have taken place already. And what the staff is saying is this gives them a tool. Even an individual who had limited Spanish-speaking ability wasn't able to get through to a community member. Through this tool, they were able to fill out a job application, and they walked out the door with it. So what community are sharing with the staff is that they're just loving this. And it's a really human touch for a digital tool. And our Smart Cities Roadmap and City Manager's Dashboard. The Smart Cities Roadmap, again, is directional and foundational. And one thing that we recently did was the Office of Innovation and Information Technology Services issued a survey thanks to Mayor and Council for sharing that. We had more than 520 responses very quickly. And 17% of those that did respond identified accessibility as important to smart cities. So we were really happy to see that. And our City Manager's Dashboard, again, City Manager Barton wanted this ever-evolving. And we recently did an enhancement, working with the IT department, to add mobility from the keyboard, increasing the size of the cards, limiting the need for scrolling. All of these best practices for accessibility. And we've added step-by-step instructions for navigating as well. And digital kiosks that we mentioned. Our Street Transportation Department has done a terrific job and implemented these in downtown. Six have been installed so far. Ike is the vendor. These, again, are smart digital kiosks. And this is a foundation for the future as well as today. What is great about Ike? They led with accessibility. And they actually worked with the National Federation of the Blind at the forefront to do testing as well as implementation of the tools. There's also accessibility for those with low hearing or hearing impairment, mobility issues. It's all in there, and they're willing to meet with this work group and street transportation. We did a deep dive into the system. And we're able to identify some common languages spoken in Phoenix that were not included. And they quickly implemented those to the system. And that was with help from our EOD department as well. So really, we looked at long-term and foundational practices, but also immediate action. So you'll see that from this Subcommittee in terms of what has been accomplished to date. In this picture, you'll see Nicole Anderson. She's Chair of the Mayor's Commission on Disability. And this is her lovely daughter Alexandra. And they are working with some digital tools here. This is really just the beginning. This is now, as Assistant City Manager Inger Erikson said, its core values now in our efforts related to smart cities. This has only enhanced that and accelerated that. And I'm very pleased to pass this on to a longtime colleague, Denise Resnick.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. I am a native Phoenician, and I love this city. And it's because of all of you. Some of you before you were even in this elected office, but many of you since, who have taken my calls, who have responded to texts and emails, and who have said yes. And you are the reason. And this community is the reason that we are known as the most autism-friendly city in the world. And as the mother of a 34-year-old son with autism who was told when he was two to love, accept, and plan to institutionalize him, you have shown us it is possible to make a better way and a better life. So thank you for making me love the city and making others a city that is good for children, youth, and families of all ages. And I am proud to represent our Subcommittee on Social Awareness, where accessibility plays in Phoenix. And this is a Subcommittee that has been focused on raising the awareness and our commitment to accessibility. And we sought to collaborate with the public to create a plan that reflects our community's needs and aspirations through public engagement, marketing, and communication. And on this slide, you see the photo of a father and son playing at the fully accessible playground at Encanto Park, one of my favorite spots to hold my birthday parties as a child. Our Subcommittee focused on tackling two central challenges. First, there was a clear need for more comprehensive communications of Phoenix's accessibility efforts. We wanted to build and sustain public understanding of what the city is doing in this space. Second, the city lacked a central resource hub to reinforce the Phoenix's role as a national leader in accessibility. Many resources existed, but too often, they were siloed or disjointed. In addressing those challenges, the Subcommittee had several accomplishments. We raised visibility of accessibility initiatives. We engaged the community through powerful storytelling through a multimedia, multi-platform campaign. And we measured public sentiment by leveraging the city's ongoing community survey through ZenCity, a community engagement software. I'm thrilled to share some samples of our multimedia awareness campaign. This is the fun stuff. fun stuff. The video played at the beginning of this presentation was an example of the storytelling work that is part of this campaign, and the photos incorporated throughout the presentation are all part of the campaign. The campaign positions Phoenix as a global leader in disability inclusion, and the campaign was executed entirely by the city's remarkable, remarkably talented people who are part of the Communications Office with no additional budget or resources allocated. Staff worked with the Subcommittee to strategically select the photos and video shoots, source models for the talent, and picture both city services and nonprofit partners to demonstrate how Phoenix, across the board, has something for everyone. At this time, I'm thrilled to acknowledge the models who volunteered their time and likeness for the campaign and who are here today. Please stand or wave if you are here so we can recognize you. Thank you. Pictured on this slide are three photos from the campaign. First, a gentleman, George, using accessible public transit. Dial-a-Ride helps George be independent because his vision doesn't allow him to drive. Second, we see the beautiful Nicole and her daughter Alexandra again at the fully accessible playground at Encanto Park. And last, Brianna, who has low vision, at Burton Bar Library, reading a book in large font form. The Communications Office secured placements for the campaign throughout all owned platforms and mediums to reach as large of an audience as possible. This included social media, newsletters, at digital kiosks, billboards, and more. Here are a few examples of the campaign in action. The campaign showcases accessibility in a variety of forms, each with a different positive action verb. In this example, accessibility inspires in Phoenix. The campaign was created in English and Spanish, noted on the screen side by side. Pictured here is Brianna again at Burton Bar in the large type font section reading a book. Based on her expression, she appears to be inspired by that book. This example says, "Accessibility grows in Phoenix," and pictures Nicole and her daughter Alexandra and her mobility device at the Foundation for Blind Children Alexandra's School. The Communications Office also secured placement for the campaign at the Legends Digital Billboard alongside Chase Field pictured here. The Communications Office, this one says, "Accessibility thrives in Phoenix," and pictures a father pushing his son in the inclusive swing set at Encanto Park. All of the graphics and post direct to phoenix.gov/accessible, Accessible Phoenix, our new digital resource hub. This was one of our goals as a Subcommittee, to break down silos and create one centralized resource on phoenix.gov to include both city and community programs and resources. The digital hub promotes transparency and access to services for those in need, and with your support and outreach, it will continue to grow and expand. This slide will show two clips of how the digital resource hub looks on desktop and mobile devices. It was designed with accessibility in mind, and on the new phoenix.gov, which is better than ever. It is also mobile-friendly. I think I was going to show the second video. I'm sorry if I messed up on that. One more time. Does that work? Okay, thanks. The city utilizes ZenCity, a community engagement software, to measure resident satisfaction through an ongoing survey. This is an opportunity to change a few questions in the survey each quarter to ask residents about timely topics. The Subcommittee leveraged that opportunity to gather public sentiment towards the city's policies and procedures for people with disabilities in the second quarter of 2025. More than 1,100 people replied to the survey, which is representative of census data. The survey revealed several priorities noted on the screen. Ranked at the top was bus stop and light rail access. Next, accessible amenities at city facilities. Third, pedestrian pathways, sidewalks, and curb ramps. Fourth, street and crosswalk signals. And fifth, additional concerns, including phone, website, meetings, and print access. Moving forward, the Subcommittee has a few long-term goals. Pictured on this slide is a woman sitting with her feet in a pool as she is throwing a beach ball up in the air, and she is a first-place Phoenix resident. The Subcommittee recommends that we continue to leverage ZenCity to conduct a more targeted survey rather than a survey to the general public as part of our ongoing outreach and engagement. We recommend a targeted survey to people who have experience with disabilities or those who work in or are educated in that space. With that data and feedback, we anticipate campaign refinements. We'd also like to continue partnerships to amplify our leadership in this space. And finally, and oh so importantly, we'd love your support to identify awareness and promotional opportunities throughout the city and in each of your districts. We're eager to hear from you and those you serve so we may amplify our work and benefit the people who also live, learn, and love their city of Phoenix. And as part of our teamwork, it's my pleasure to pass the mic to Interim Equal Opportunity Director Judy Burroughs.
Thank you, Denise, for the introduction. It's a great honor to serve as the Phoenix Equal Opportunity Director. I work with amazing staff at EOD that support the three commissions, including the Mayor's Commission on Disability Issue, and support citywide ADA public programs. And thank you, Mayor, and members of Council, for the opportunity to present on, to present on the efforts made across various city departments to enhance services through our accessibility initiatives. In this picture, we see a resident from first place using larger, easier pedestrian crosswalk button. I'm thrilled to share the progress and innovative strategies implemented with each of your support to achieve the vision to establish Phoenix as the most accessible city in the world. A sample of department initiatives that will be shared today include Parks and Recreation, Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport, Public Transit, Equal Opportunity, Public Works, and Community and Economic Development. In this picture, we see two adult residents and a child walking along the path at Encanto Park Playground. In the Parks and Recreation Department in District 1, Telephone Pioneer Park was the first barrier-free park in the nation. In partnership with Ability 360, the park offers safe, inclusive, and accessible adult and youth sports classes and programs, aquatics programs, golf, outdoor nature programs, and many other adaptive recreation classes. In District 4, working with Quanis Club to assist with funding, Encanto Park was the first fully accessible playground and pathway to modern ADA standards. In this picture, we see our MCDI Chair Nicole with her daughter at the Encanto Playground. And in District 6, Popco Park installed a fully accessible fishing dock with accessible parking and pathway, and has been recognized as the best wheelchair-friendly trail by All Trails, a popular national trail site. In District 2, Lone Mountain Park, a new build, will include accessible restrooms, walkways, parking lots, courts, and playground. And in District 5, Mariposa Park and El Oso Park will both have accessible splash pads. And most recently, in District 7, as we see pictured in this slide, New Levine Heritage Park has accessible walkways, parking lot, courts, and playground. In District 8, Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport has worked for years to provide an accessible and empowering travel experience for all passengers. Most recently, the Aviation Department introduced a first-in-the-nation workshop for travelers with dementia and their companions. This award-winning workshop, which is now offered twice a year in person and virtually, highlights the many resources available from the city and our community and federal agency partners to make traveling a positive one for people living with dementia. The Compassion Corner, pictured in this slide, is staffed and used daily for accessibility assistance. Programs such as the Compassion Cacti Lanyard Program is a new program that Councilwoman Stark spoke about earlier, that aims to provide extra friendly and patient hand to those customers who want to self-identify as needing additional assistance when traveling through the airport. A green lanyard with little saguaro's is pictured in this slide and is being worn by Councilwoman Stark and Councilwoman Keisha Hodge-Washington. Airport employees know that when a customer wears the lanyard, they may need extra assistance or time at check-in counters, security, or other areas. Also located at the Compassion Corner is a sensory room that offers a dementia-friendly quiet setting, and it also provides support to children or adults that may need a respite from the sensory overload from an airport environment. Public Transit provides several services focused on accessibility and has made significant interestate investments to enhance access to transit options as well. Phoenix Dial-a-Ride is a shared ride service that allows ADA-certified residents to schedule trips around the city. Seniors and those certified under the ADA can access Dial-a-Ride shared ride service daily from 4:00 AM to midnight, and reservations can be made by phone or online. In this picture, we see a Dial-a-Ride user being assisted on the wheelchair lift. Ride Choice provides seniors and those certified under the ADA access to subsidized personal transportation providers such as Rideshare, Taxi Cabs, and other wheelchair-accessible vehicles. Services are available 24 hours a day, every day of the year. A major transit infrastructure investment was the development of the 50th Street Light Rail Station. The station provides access to the Ability 360 facility and neighboring business community and supports transit-oriented communities. While all Valley Metro Light Rail Stations are ADA-accessible with features such as level boarding and lowered vending machines, the 50th Street Station features an enhanced pedestrian detection crosswalk signal, wider platforms, and gently sloped entries. Since it began service in April 2019, the 50th Street Washington Light Rail Station has had over 600,000 boardings, and during fiscal year 2425, nearly 8,500 boardings occur every month. In the Equal Opportunity and Public Works Departments, the city has been conducting self-assessments of existing facilities, programs, and services available to the public to ensure they're accessible to all individuals in accordance with the ADA. Our next steps include developing a comprehensive ADA transition plan to identify barriers and achieve compliance. In this picture, we see the city's very own Deputy Aviation Director, Matthew Heil, who is cerebral palsy and uses a wheelchair. He's entering the Phoenix Sky Harbor Phoenix Sky Train Phoenix, or 24th Street Station. Additionally, the city is working toward obtaining the Certified Autistic Center designation through the International Board of Credentialing and Continuing Education Standards. This training was launched in May 2025, and citywide, 2,200 employees have already completed the required coursework. The city will achieve certification when 80% of public-facing employees complete the required coursework, and will maintain certification when employees complete the refresher training every two years. The Community and Economic Development Department Mobile Career Unit connects employers with residents seeking job opportunities and provides hands-on resources to support job seekers. The MCU is a fully accessible 38-foot RV, providing a wheelchair ramp, an adjustable desk, and computers with accessibility tools. This groundbreaking initiative was developed by the City of Phoenix as part of Bloomberg Philanthropacy Global Mayor's Challenge. Chosen as only one of 15 cities to receive a $1 million grant, Phoenix is leading the charge in the future of workforce services. And as of June 2025, 477 contingent employment offers have already been made through the MCU. And in this picture, we see the MCU RV. And next, I'd like to introduce Nicole Anderson, who is the Chair of the Mayor's Commission on Disability Issues.
Thank you, Director Burroughs, for the introduction. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak today. I have a few couple slides to talk to you about the future of this important work. But first, before I share my update, it would be amiss if I didn't give a little background about Alexandra, who you saw a few times during this presentation. She's a 10-year-old living with Pitt-Hopkins Syndrome, a rare genetic condition that stole her voice and prevents her from walking. While she can make small steps to her mom and dad, which we're so grateful for, she is wheelchair-bound. She's only one of 10 Arizonans living with this condition. So I'm so grateful to be able to share her story and what needs she needs to have to live as an equal community member in the city that she calls home, Phoenix. So with that, we're going to highlight now this important work and how it will not die. It will continue to live on through the very important Mayor's Commission on Disability Issues. I've had the pleasure of chairing this group for the past four years and serving as a committee member for the past eight. It's been a privilege to serve in this capacity as well as being invited to serve in this subgroup for the past 14 months. So the work doesn't stop. We'll ensure that any tasks that are left to still be completed will continue to gather momentum, only this time with the Commissioners of the MCDI. This will allow the important work to continue to grow and to continue to create meaningful impact. A key focus moving forward is strengthening interdepartmental collaboration, bringing together expertise areas and resources across the city, as well as among key residences and partners, to better serve our disability community. It truly will take a village to continue this work. Our commitment is to maintain Phoenix's position as a national leader in accessibility innovation and setting the standard for inclusive practices and creating a city where all residents and visitors can thrive. In short, the MCDI stands ready to continue this great work and remains dedicated to support Mayor Gallego's mission of making Phoenix the most accessible and inclusive city in the nation. Together, we can accomplish so much, as evident in today's incredible presentation with my colleagues. This truly is more than just policy work. It's about creating a city where every person, regardless of ability, has the opportunity to thrive. And for myself and so many of us that serve our city, that mission is deeply personal. Speaking of those that serve our city, we are so excited to soon recognize eight incredible individuals, businesses, and organizations that are working so hard to recognize those living with a disability. Upcoming, and in just a few short weeks, on October 23rd, 2025, from 4:00 to 6:00, is the MCDI's Disability Awareness and Recognition Event, or DARE, Dare for Short. It'll take place just up the street at Burton Bar Central Library. Everyone's invited. However, I have heard we've reached capacity for the first time, so I am so grateful for that. Next time, bigger venue! Here will recognize outstanding achievements by outstanding architecture, nonprofit business, community service, outstanding educator, and also will be awarding two Detective Walter Olson Lifetime Achievement Awards. Now, I can't say who the winners are yet, but there's a couple people in the room that will be honored on that day. So you heard it from me first. Congratulations and thank you for your service, and we are so excited to recognize you. Also, I think it's very fitting to mention that last year's Architectural Award went to the City of Phoenix's Parks and Rec Department Natural Resources Division. They renovated the Gila Valley Lookout in South Mountain Park and preserved. They transformed the site to now include an ADA-compliant circumference pathway, two ADA parking spaces, multiple ADA viewpoints, and two ADA shade structures, welcoming all visitors, including those who are wheelchair-bound or mobility-challenged, all to enjoy the beauty of South Mountain while taking in the breathtaking views of the surrounding communities and mountain ranges. It's places like this that offer a place for both my daughters, Alexandra, and her five-year-old sister, Austin, to enjoy their community together. That truly is everything for our family. In closing, I would like to say that I'm deeply grateful, and as a Phoenix native and a fifth-generation Arizonan, I routinely speak out about our city and how inclusive we are and how welcoming. And, you know, it's probably due to- And, you know, it's probably due to this crazy residential housing boom, right? Everyone wants to come here. But I do know those with a disability see it as a place of refuge and a place that they're welcomed. And I so look forward to working with the MCDI, other Commissioners, to make sure that along with our fellow Councilmembers, that we ensure that Phoenix is a diverse, inclusive, and accessible community for all. And now, back to Inger Erickson, Assistant City Manager, to close us out.
Mayor, Members of Council, that concludes our presentation. And again, it was my great pleasure to work with this entire group. We had a fantastic group. And for me, one of my final things to accomplish here in the City of Phoenix, and I'm glad I got to do it with them.
Well, thank you all for the incredible work, the presentation, and continuing to move the city forward. Councilwoman Stark, thank you for spearheading this. We would not be here today without your dedication to Inger. What a fabulous last presentation. You've worked to make this a city for all of our residents, and this is yet another great exclamation mark on an impressive career. Today, this at its core is about people. Do we want to be a city where everyone gets the chance to fully participate? We want to put accessibility at the heart of how we grow as a city. And that work, this work group, you guys have done just that. You've brought together departments, community, and changed Phoenix's future for the better. I want to acknowledge Denise Resnick is our sitting Global Citizen of the Year at the City of Phoenix, which we award to a resident or group who has helped make us globally known for really positive areas. And in Denise's case, that recognition was for the work she has done to make us globally known for being an accessible city. So thank you for helping us spread the word about good things happening in the City of Phoenix, but more importantly, for doing the good things. I want to thank the Chair of the Mayor's Commission on Disability Issues, Nicole, for serving as a bridge between this work group and that commission. And also want to recognize the Members of the Mayor's Commission on Disability Issues who are here with us today. Thank you for your service. Your leadership and advocacy makes us a better city. Accessibility is an ongoing commitment, and I'm thrilled that many of our work group members plan to continue their service as Commissioners on the MCDI. Their appointments will come before this body at the second council meeting in October. We are incredibly fortunate to have a community that answers the call to serve time and time again. I want to thank Members of my team, particularly Sandy and Tony, for your leadership and support of this group. All of you have contributed so much, and it really matters. Thank you. And now I'll turn it back to our Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I came about this because I got the privilege of aging. I'm the big 7-0, and now I recognize that I need to be more aware of accessibility. But I know a lot of you have loved ones that have issues, or I'm not going to call them issues. They're special, and you guys really reflect that. And I got to tell you, I'm really proud to be a part of this committee. You guys are wonderful. And Inger, thank you so much. You know, I've enjoyed working with you over the years. I'm going to cry, but this really is very important to me. So thank all of you for what you've done.
Congratulations, Councilwoman Stark, and to the committee. You're so thankful to have such wonderfully committed and passionate folks in our city. We couldn't be more fortunate to have you all. I recently got to tour First Place, the homes and things that you're providing, the activities, the all of the creatures, comfort creatures we like to have in our communities are in your community. And so it is so incredibly special. And so thank you for sharing that with us and look forward to being able to partner to find other places in our city to have a place like First Place there. But couldn't be more proud of Councilwoman Stark and all of you. And thank you, Inger. You know, it's been said before, but I'll say it one more time. Congratulations on an incredible career with the City of Phoenix, and what an incredible project to get to finish on, what a very high note. So thank you for your work, and I hope you enjoy retirement as much as you have given to the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hodge, Washington.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel I also want to extend my gratitude. Someone who has not had the ability to deal with disability, I take so much for granted, and this presentation was so insightful. It shows the thoughtfulness that went into it. It shows the deliberateness, it shows the intentionality. And I could see how it's going to make a tremendous difference for the residents of Phoenix. So I too want to extend my gratitude to each and every one of you for serving, for you bringing your passion, your tenacity, and your knowledge to the table to help make in city, sorry, the City of Phoenix one where everyone can fully navigate and participate in a meaningful manner. I also want to commend Councilwoman Stark for her work with this. Thank you as well, Inger. This is a phenomenal way to be ending your career here at the City of Phoenix, the last and legacy that this will lead. I want to thank also Nicole, Michael, everyone. I don't want to miss any names, but you all played such an integral part in this. And I guess sometimes, sometimes able-bodied individuals take a lot of things for granted. And I wanted to, I just wanted to point out that, and I want to also thank the Mayor for bringing this issue to our attention and ensuring that we work towards this. We truly, to me, this is what inclusion looks like. We include all members of our residents into the actual function and operation of our city. So I just want to say thank you, job well done. Thank you for everything that you have done.
Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I go all the thanks to all of you as a TIA of a young man with Down Syndrome, just seeing all the investments and the resources that we are putting into our communities is just very enriching because, you know, he won't be able to live on his own because, but knowing that some, a place like First, what is the First Place, exists, I'm looking forward to hopefully touring that soon. But just, you know, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. Like, it's amazing to be a leader on the global scale or on the global stage on something like this. It shows that we are a welcoming city, that we are trying to find a place for everyone and making sure that everyone has the resources they need to thrive in the community. So thank you, Mayor, for this being one of the visions that you want to see for Phoenix. I think it's just so beneficial to all of us. And I share the thoughts of Councilwoman Hodge, Washington, as able-bodied individuals. Sometimes we don't think of all the things, so it's just really good to have all your partnerships and advocacy to make sure that we are, we are truly building the Phoenix that we want our citizens to thrive in. So just want to really extend the thanks on that. I do have a couple questions, just because I'm getting familiar with this program or just with this project. I did hear, and it's very encouraged by some of the goals that we have, and it's really good to hear that we don't plan to stop on any of those goals and actually go further. So that's really, really amazing to hear. And I know that in a couple of the sections, there was identified how we're going to identify those goals. But Inger, I don't know if you're able to provide exactly a little bit more on how we're going to just identify future goals that maybe haven't been identified or just overall?
Sure. Mayor, Members of Council, Councilwoman Hernandez. I do believe that's why we are transitioning it over to the Commission. They will take what we've done and also some of the goals that we didn't accomplish but are there for the future, and they'll take them and work with the city staff to make sure that we don't stop, we continue on, and then take more, right? And as we can take off more bites, we just had a year to do the things that we did, and I think we accomplished quite a lot. But they'll continue with the list we already have and expand it, going further, working in partnership with Equal Opportunity and the various departments that have those assets.
Awesome. Can you give me a list of the, of all the current, the list of current projects or things that have been identified that we want to work on?
Yes, we'll get a list to everybody. We had a working list of what we accomplished and what we want to have for future goals, so we'll get that to everybody.
Awesome. Thank you so much. And then, yeah, and if that could include like what areas of the city we're looking for that, that would be great information as well. All right, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Thank you. Thank you, Inger. This is a good one to end on, and a smart one, and to complete it all the way. I'm sure you're fast and furious at this, looking at the timeline to get here. So congratulations, Inger. It's a one, it's a great one. Accessibility has always somehow, and the work that I've done, has always been part of my work, starting from Phoenix Union. I learned about hearing loop technology through Senator Leela Alston, Alston, because she was at our meetings and she was struggling because of her hearing aid, and it wasn't connecting. And so we were able to do that at the Phoenix Union Boardroom, but what she was able to do was do it in the, in the, in both houses and the chambers. So it's exciting to hear that we have it active and we have now implemented within the city. And that's where I got to learn about the hearing loop technology. And so I'm glad it's now here. The other thing is that signal, signal lights are very important for accessibility. And I am an advocate of really trying to push for more of that because we need more of that throughout the city, and particularly Seventh Street and Thomas, where Savvy is. And Savvy is just right down the street from where First Place is. So as, I would like to advocate for that and sort of to make the whole connection and make the whole corridor, as you can see, accessible. I am very proud of the work that has been done in the central core. I just happen to represent that area. So First Place, as I am right now working very intimately with Denise at Phoenix College and making it accessible and open to everyone, as I learned through the Kiwanis Club on what fully accessible park looks like and how that feels, I have been able to touch all of that. And then at Savvy, I happen to be one, and they put me through a, a, how do I want to say? How it would feel and look like, and really the mental piece of not being able to see. And so I have had all these experiences just personally with the work that I've done throughout my career. So I am blessed and I am grateful for your work and how you did it. And then in the, Darrell, and the work that you did, as I sat on, on the committee where we were able to change some language in the space of housing. And so somehow, somewhere, I've been touched by each one of you, and so I just want to thank you for that. Making Phoenix great.
Wonderful, thank you. We do have Judith Clark here with us to provide testimony on the item.
Good afternoon. I want to thank all of you for the work you've done with the accessibility. I personally appreciate so much of the resources that we have here in Phoenix because I know a lot of people throughout the country who don't have any of the things that we have here. My name is Judith Clark, and I am the Secretary for the National Federation of the Blind Senior Division of Arizona and a board member for the Foundation of Blind Veterans. I wish to, excuse me, I wish to address the Ride Choice Program for Phoenix, a curb-to-curb on-demand transportation service for people with disabilities and seniors. This program was supposedly expanded from ADA-qualified people to include all seniors on July 1st, 2025. And as a low-vision senior, I have been trying to get access to it since May of 2025. I have been told there are insufficient funds for this program, and so everyone is put on a waiting list. I've also been told that since I have access to Dial-a-Ride, I shouldn't need Ride Choice. This is simply not true. Dial-a-Ride requires the ride to be scheduled a minimum of a day in advance, and you can only go to the address originally requested and at the times requested. Doctor appointments are not easily planned. Sometimes an appointment might take 20 minutes, and another time the appointment might take two hours. Also, events might arise that would require a ride that same day, such as a doctor needing testing done at different locations following the appointment. Another example is today, my ride is supposed to pick me up at 5:04, and I had to guess at what time this meeting would be finished. And if I had Ride Choice, I could just call and say I'm ready to be picked up. Now I have to run out and try to catch my ride before it leaves. I just would like to know what's being done to address this. And thank you for taking accessibility into consideration for these projects because they are greatly appreciated and greatly needed. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that important testimony. Darrell, you are also registered to speak as a member of the public. We don't always do that if someone's a panelist, but we.
I wasn't sure if I needed to.
Okay, perfect.
So I'm, I'm good.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for the important testimony, and thank you all for this. And I'll close on one final positive note. The first feature-length film filmed in the City of Phoenix with our tax credit, after the state passed the tax credit, was Unstoppable, the story of Anthony Robles, the wrestler at ASU who overcame so many challenges, including being born without one leg, to be a national champion. So on that note, we will adjourn. Ninja, and the parks are designed by our community. So thank you again to the folks who came to meetings, talked about what we need, and most importantly, thank you to the people who will enjoy the wonderful park system. We are able to do this thanks also to the great partnership on the Phoenix City Council. And now I will introduce the Councilwoman who represents this area, Councilwoman Anna Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor Gallego, and good morning to everyone attending this exciting day. Sorry, the wind's a little blowing our papers everywhere. My name is Anna Hernandez, and I am the Councilwoman for Phoenix District 7, which includes much of southwest Phoenix and includes Levine and this park. So I'm super excited to be here with everybody. I'm so excited for this park because less than a year ago, I was on these doors during our campaign talking to residents about how we could make Levine stronger. Residents already knew about this park and were ready for it to be finished. For years, residents have asked for more opportunities to gather, to play, and enjoy the outdoors. So today, I'm excited to be here as we deliver on that promise. I want to thank the residents of Levine for making your voices heard in this project and for continuing to lift up your hopes for our community. Your input definitely shapes, helps to shape our city. This incredible new park has something for everyone. It has a playground for the kids, a basketball court, a skate plaza for teens, a disc golf course, and like the mayor mentioned, the ultimate ninja for families, and open areas for everyone to enjoy. City parks are essential for how we foster social connections within our communities, and our parks provide positive physical and mental well-being. As we relax and play and as we connect with each other, we create strong bonds and safe communities. I'm proud to see this space now transformed into a beautiful part of the Levine community to enjoy. I want to thank the Parks and Recreation Department and all of the partners involved in bringing this vision to a reality. With that, I am happy to introduce Parks and Recreation Department Director Cynthia Aguilar. Parks and Recreation Department Director Cynthia Aguilar.
Good morning, everyone. I'm so happy that you could be with us. I'm Cynthia Aguilar, and I have the honor of leading the city's Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you to our children from next door. We're so happy you are here. What grades are you in? All third graders. So that makes you around eight years old, huh? Seven and eight-year-olds. Okay, awesome. I have twin girls who are nine. Our mayor has a son who is eight. In third grade, that's right. And so we know how important parks are. And I say that most days, I feel like I have the best job in the world because I get to work with the team who gets to build and plan for these kinds of things. And as the mayor said, this is our third one in just over a year, 16 months, in Levine and southwest Phoenix. And if you remember, if you've lived here long enough, these properties that I'm talking about, including this one, were just dirt, right? It was just dirt next to your school and across from your home. And so we're so happy that we can do this for you. I would like to thank Mayor Gallego. For years, she has been a champion for our park system in getting these parks developed. I'd also like to thank Councilwoman Hernandez. Since she joined the Phoenix City Council, I hope I'm not misspeaking Councilwoman, but I think Parks is her favorite department. And she is also a champion, and we're so lucky because we know with her leadership and guidance, we're going to continue to do great things in District 7 as well. Our Parks Board member, Pastor Aubrey Barnwell, was recognized earlier. But we have seven members on the board, and they get to help guide us as well. And so thank you to the community. If you're a Parks and Recreation employee, I know you've been thanked, but I always ask them to please raise your hand. Most of them hide in the back. But when we build these beautiful parks, they not only help with that, but from that point on, when they open, they're mowing the grass, they're trimming the trees, they're checking the playground every morning to make sure they're safe. And they love what they do, and they take great pride in their work. So help us, ask your friends and neighbors to help us take care of this park so it can look like this every single day. So thank you again. I'm going to now turn it over to Mike, who I think is going to get ready for the fun part that we're all here for. Thank you, everyone.
All right, you guys. Please, a big round of applause for our dignitaries. Thank you very much. All right, you guys. Now, we're getting ready for the fun stuff. We still got a little business to take care of, though. See that cool playground behind you? See that big red ribbon back there, too? Two things are going to happen. One, we're going to ask you guys, teachers, staff, please assist. We're all going to go behind that big ribbon, okay? And then we're going to have our dignitaries join you behind that ribbon, and we're going to cut that ribbon, and the park will be open. And then, wait, there's more. After that, you guys can play, have a good time for a little bit. But before you go back to school, we have some goodies for you. We have some backpacks, we have some prizes, we have some healthy snacks. So again, not your normal class day, more of a fun class day.